Welcome to the New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Public Housing. Please silence all electronic devices. If you wish to submit testimony, may do so at testimony@council.myc.gov. Please do not approach this. If you need assistance, we'll be more than happy to help you. Thanks for your cooperation. Chair, we're ready to begin.
This meeting is coming to order. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this hearing of the Committee on Public Housing. I am Councilmember Alexa Aviles, the Chair of the New York City Council's Committee on Public Housing. I would like to thank you all for attending this oversight hearing on the current state of the New York City Housing Authority, the RadPact Program, and the Public Housing Preservation Trust. We are joined by my colleagues Deputy Speaker Ayala, Councilmember De La Rosa, and Councilmember Brewer, and I believe we may have Councilmember Barron online. The New York City Housing Authority is almost 90 years old and has been on a circuitous journey over the decades on how to address the compounding impacts of mismanagement, crumbling infrastructure, and a consistent defunding by all levels of government. Residents have witnessed a number of plans, from CompMod to infill to selling off air rights, to demolition, to the PACT program while being under monitorship, and of the most recent creation, the Public Housing Trust, among others. While all of these iterations have been a number of management and organization -- with all of these iterations, there have been a number of management and organizational reshuffles, new programs and new plans, and many simply recycling promises of the past with tweaked approaches and new faces. NYCHA looks different today than it did a decade ago and will look even more different a year from now. What has not changed is that the residents of NYCHA still face conditions no New Yorker should have to live with, and they have questions that deserve to be answered. It is no wonder there is so little trust from residents who have been sold all of these plans while the quality of life and their rights seem to deteriorate before their eyes. My goal for this hearing is to provide a space for those questions and for NYCHA to provide answers about the future of public housing in our city. Today, we will delve into where NYCHA is, the state of NYCHA, the PACT program, and the future of the trust. The majority, approximately 68% of NYCHA residents today, are still under the traditional Section 9 public housing funding, with the most recently completed PNA putting forward a staggering $78 billion need across all the developments, and residents still living in subpar conditions. While we must give NYCHA credit for the improvements that have come in certain aspects, there is clearly so much work to be done. Poor and working-class New Yorkers can see the threat of displacement and gentrification a mile away. Residents are waiting for a clear plan and action to address these conditions and deserve clear and transparent communications about what is being done and accountability for implementation of those plans and when they go wrong. We have heard mixed stories about the work that has been completed and what still needs to be done from a growing number of residents living in packed developments where private developers should be addressing those needs. While NYCHA has certainly incorporated resident feedback in more recent PACT processes, the authority is full steam ahead with programs without a comprehensive assessment of its impact. Lastly, we're only two weeks away from the residents of Nostrand Houses starting to vote on whether or not they will join the Public Housing Trust. Regardless of the outcome of the vote, Nostrand residents and all NYCHA residents are entitled to answers about the next steps in the trust process, including which developments are next to vote. A through line in all these topics, and my questions will be transparency and accountability. Transparency from NYCHA is necessary so that the council and NYCHA residents can make informed decisions and be part of the process to continue to improve NYCHA. And to that end, we will be hearing two bills I've sponsored, Introduction 646 and Introduction 648. Intro 646 would require a report on the PACT program, so far detailing the conversion and selection, as well as the number of evictions taking place before and after the conversion. This will help future residents decide whether to vote on the joining the PACT program and provide clarity on what if any displacement has taken place due to the PACT program. Intro 648 would require NYCHA to provide a report on the units that have been vacant for more than 30 continuous days. The report would include the reasons why the unit was vacant to supplement the public information on NYCHA's website, which shows an alarming growth in the vacant units across NYCHA properties. NYCHA residents, workers, government officials must be held accountable to ensure that we are delivering on our responsibilities, to ensure that we protect and preserve New York City's greatest social housing asset, the New York City Public Housing Authority. I would like to thank my staff, Christina Botego, Edward Serna, Amorachi Ngadi, along with Public Housing Committee staff, Jose Conde, Charles Kim, Connor Mealy, Christopher Zavora, Nicholas Montalbano, for all the work they've put into this hearing. And in keeping with the tradition of this committee, before we hear from NYCHA, we will first hear from a panel of residents. I will turn it over to Committee Counsel to call up the first witnesses.
We'll call up the first witnesses in person for the resident pre-panel. If you wish to testify and you have not done so already, please see the sergeant-at-arms at the back of the room to fill out a testimony slip. The first panel of witnesses will be Barbara McFadden, Tamika Map, Alexa Cruz, and Maisha Morales.
Alexa. Alexa Cruz.
Isa Cruz, my apologies.
The first four testimonies, Ms. Morales, Maisha Morales, Isa Cruz, Tamika Map, and Barbara McFadden? Okay. Okay. So, we can start on the chair.
Chair and esteemed City Council members, I want to express my gratitude for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Tamika Map. I'm the district leader for the 68th Assembly District, Part D, and the state committee woman for the 68th Assembly District. I'm here to speak on behalf of the NYCHA tenants in my community who are deeply concerned about the potential conversion of the New York City Public Housing to RadPact or the Preservation Trust Program. NYCHA is a vital lifeline, representing the very essence of true affordable housing in our great city. It serves as a sanctuary for thousands of families who would otherwise struggle to find a place they can call home in a city where the cost of living continues to rise. We stand at a crucial juncture where the preservation of NYCHA is paramount. The consequences of a covert in NYCHA to alternative programs are there. We risk worsening the already critical issue of homelessness, potentially addressing the overwhelm burden placed on shelter systems which already at capacity. It is our moral duty to safeguard these homes, these lifelines, for countless New Yorkers. But our responsibility doesn't end with preservation; it extends to accountability. NYCHA has been plagued by years of mismanagement and neglect result in deplorable living conditions for many residents. It's an infallible that individuals and families living in home rental with mold, mildew, and without adequate heat despite faithfully paying the rent on time each month. This is an injustice that cannot go undressed. If any other landlord is subject to the tenants of such conditions, they will be held accountable, and NYCHA should be no exception. I implore the City Council to act swiftly to fully fund Section 9, ensuring that the financial resources are available to address the present issues facing NYCHA. We must allocate the necessary resources to repair and maintain these public housing units, guaranteeing safe and dignified living conditions for all NYCHA residents. Furthermore, we must establish an independent audit board to rigorously oversee every dollar that NYCHA spends. This board will ensure that taxpayers' funds are used efficiently and effectively, but will focus on quality work rather than quick fixes. Such oversight is critical to rebuilding trust within the community and ensure the hard-earned money of the New York City residents is put to good use. In conclusion, preserving NYCHA is just not a matter of policy; it's a matter of justice and compassion for those who rely on these homes. And you can see my other written testimony that is submitted already. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Alexa Cruz, and I live in NYCHA since 1969. And I remember that my building was built in 1963. It's not 90 years old, and my building is pretty well-structured from hurricanes and fireproof and all, et cetera, et cetera. If they move us to the regular buildings, the new construction, it's all sheet-wrack and it's hazardous to everyone. And I am not happy with the RadPact because they have a one to 20 years that they can keep the Section 8, and after 20 years, maybe 10, 15, we will be out of our apartments and we will be out of the city because we won't be able to afford apartments anywhere in New York City. And we will be out in the streets, and I am afraid of that. I pray every day that NYCHA does pay, that HUD pays NYCHA so that we can get those billions of dollars that we were supposed to get years ago when the billions of dollars were distributed to NYCHA and none of the repairs were made, and everything is falling apart because they literally are doing it on purpose so they can knock us down. They don't even call the police on the drug dealers in front of the building. They pass them. They just don't, they ignore them. They just want to get rid of us, period. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Barbara McFadden. I happen to be the president at Nostrand Housing and the first vice-chair for C-COP. First and foremost, I want to begin because something that Nostrand Housing do, we partner with different entities, and NYCHA happens to be one of them. And one thing that I want to put on the record and say, NYCHA has a new team, and I'm very happy and satisfied with the new team. I'm not talking about the old team 10 years or 20 years ago; I'm talking about the new team now. And in order for me to tell everyone about the team and the greatness they've been doing with us, partnering with us at Nostrand Housing, I'm going to start presenting the names as I follow through. First and foremost, I want to begin by thanking our CEO, Ms. Lisa Bovin-Hayer, our president of the citywide chair, Mr. Daniel Barbs. Mr., I want to thank also Mr. Jimmy Santana. I want to thank Ms. Eva Trimble, Ms. Yuka Buskett. I would like to thank Mr. Andrew Kaplan, Mr. Brian Honig, Courtney Yu, Mandu, Mr. Leroy, Rodney Gwen, Makiba, Erica Denisha, Danny Mahia, Mr. Curtis Williams, and Mr. Posey and Morelia. Let me explain to you why I thank them. Because we heard so many bad things in the past about NYCHA, it's like a black cloud. As me working for the New York City Board of Ed as a substitute teacher, I learned to be optimistic, take the good with the bad. I don't just want to bring to the table any negativity; I want to talk about the goodness and the goodness that NYCHA been doing for us. And first and foremost, I want to begin by saying I was appointed to be on the trust board by Mayor Adams. We've been doing 100 engagement around Nostrand Housing. And let me break that down about engagement. We partner with Sheepset Bay High School. We partner with Shell, partner with Shell Bank. We had different workshops explaining what trust was, explaining what Section 9 was, explaining what RadPact. Even though Nostrand is first in history to do the vote and process, most and foremost is providing our residents with engagement, providing our residents with knowledge. People are going to fear, "Oh, my, am I going to lose my home?" Of course, I'm a resident at Nostrand Housing. I would feel the same way if I wasn't provided with the proper knowledge or I have people on the sideline with scare tactics. No, I'm not going for that. If you want to know what's going on, we have a resident leader in Sheepset Bay, Nostrand, and that's me, McFadden. Contact me. McFadden, y'all doing engagement? Is it possible we can do some door knocking? We're door-knocking on the 32 buildings. We putting pamphlets on the doors. We're talking to the residents. We're hearing their voices. Every residence have a voice. Even though I support the trust preservation and I was appointed to sit on the board by Mayor Adams, all my residents throughout the five boroughs of NYCHA have a voice, whether it's the trust, whether it's the Section 9, or whether it's RadPact. But most and foremost, by being, I support the trust, we're providing our residents with engagement and we're providing them with knowledge. All questions are being answered, and if there's something that they don't know, we will say to them, "We will get back to you." And I'm happy because this is history in the making. We have a lot of backlog repairs and people need their homes done. Part of living healthy is being healthy. If you get your apartment repaired...
Ms. McFadden, if you wouldn't mind wrapping up your comments really quickly because we want to ask you questions.
Okay. So, first and foremost, as I was saying, you know, part of being healthy is living healthy. You're getting your apartment done over, new equipment like stoves and refrigerators and things like that, new bathtubs. Come on, Nostrand Housing is old, 50 years and more, and I yelled.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden.
Good afternoon. My name is Maisha Morales. I'm here today not only as a former NYCHA resident and also a former resident that lived in a Section 8 building, but as an advocate for NYCHA residents for over 15 years through good old Lower East Side, but also currently as a staffer for a government official. And we all know the conditions, the deplorable conditions that residents at NYCHA have been living under, right? And these repairs have to be done, but partly the responsibility of why they're in these conditions falls on the government, all levels of government, especially the state. I'm here to share my constituents' experience, right, who were not able to have the privilege to be here today. The RadPact conversions in our district, residents, one year later, are receiving letters that, with a bill, and I've shared with maybe one or two of you here, billing people for repairs down to per-square tile. These are some of the things that some of these developers are doing. They are experiencing, it was a high rate of eviction, seniors being told they have to downsize and sending a senior from Gowanus and sending them to Far Rockaway, displacing them from their communities. These are real things that are happening. And unfortunately, there's always, there's never enough money for NYCHA residents. Section 9 has been proven that it is the best form of housing, right? Section 8, I'm going to share my experience. My parents were displaced in 1989 because my mother got a raise and made $2 more than the Section 8 income guideline, and her rent went up to $1,700 in 1989, and we were displaced. I say all this to say that Section 9 is the best form of housing. We need to protect our tenants, and I ask all of you here to please work alongside with your comrades and make sure that Section 9 is fully funded, that you save Section 9. It is the best form, and most importantly, that you all work together, the feds, the state, and City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Do you have any questions? Well, before I ask some questions, I want to recognize we've been joined by Councilmember Ose, Councilmember Wannan, and Councilmember Salamanca. Thank you for being here. I'd like to know, Ms. Cruz, to go back to you for a second. Can you tell me how long your development underwent Rad and PACT?
It's not under RadPact yet. No, it's under Section 9.
Okay.
So, we don't, it's not effective yet. But I don't want RadPact, I want Section 9. And I believe that, and they wanted to demolish the building, and the only way that they can surrender our rights is they demolish our buildings, and we will lose our rights and we will be turned over to RadPact.
What development are you from?
I'm on Chelsea.
Okay. Can you tell me a little bit, we're going to talk more about Chelsea, but tell me from your experience, what's been the engagement around the status of Chelsea?
The engagement on the repairs, you know?
Yeah, on the repairs.
Our repairs, my building is pretty good. My building is excellent. I mean, all I need in my apartment is to plaster under the sink, which they made some repairs there, and that's it. But my apartment is in good condition, and the building is in good condition. It just needs renovation.
Were you engaged in any of the public meetings that were had about the plans for Chelsea?
I went to the meetings, and they told me that, they said that they were going to renovate it, and they didn't renovate it, and I didn't understand what was Rad and PACT until I started looking it up in the NYCHA application about the RadPact, and then I started researching a lot of stuff and finding out a lot of stuff about Section 8 and then Section 9. Section 9 is supposed to be forever. It's supposed, it has no expiration, and we're protected, but Section 8, it has up to 20 years. So what happens to tenants that can't afford and they'll raise that medium rate, that high rent? What happens to them? They go in the streets, or they have to move elsewhere. Where?
Did you participate in a survey around choosing the future of the development?
Yes, I participated. I thought it was good at the beginning, and then I realized it wasn't. So then I, I don't want it because it's not, it's not a security for me. It's not a security for anybody that has low income.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Map, I'm curious, can you tell me a little bit more about, I've heard many residents call for an independent audit of NYCHA. Can you tell me more specifically around why you think this is an important thing for us to do?
Yes, I think it's important because like any corporation, when you spend corporate's money, there's accountability in making sure that the vendor is up to code. I don't think the New York City Housing Authority has any preferred vendors. They just go either with their friends or with the cheapest model, and you know, you get what you paid for. So if I have a vendor that's an elevator friend and he's my friend or connected to somebody that work at NYCHA, I'm going to keep on going to that vendor. It's not going to be fixed. It's going to be a patch because I already know in three weeks I'm going to be called again to fix that patch, and there's more money coming in for me. If we have an independent board, we can say, okay, we spend, let's say, $500,000 on fixing this elevator. Why? What's wrong with this company? Then we can start doing a little bit more research on the vendors. Is it a good vendor? How many reviews they got? You know, how many buildings they fixed and stayed in great shape versus the fix and repair? And you know, as a City Council member, our job, you know, any elected official's job is accountability, and the City Council has a right to, like, crucinize NYCHA for everything that they did. I say if I was ever a City Council member, I would sue them because of the simple fact that no one should have to live in mold, mildew, and anything. If I was a private, if there was a private landlord, they would be in court, everything happened. But since they're following the federal guidelines, it's like they get a pat on the back, let's try to figure out, let's throw more money. And if they're already mismanaging the money they get, what are they going to do with the money they're going to get for this RadPact and conversion? You know, I'm from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. My mother went through the same thing. She lived on top of the hill. The top of the hill's still vacant. They demolished the building, and she's in this little tiny little apartment because she had to downsize, and they're just holding on a thread in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. So it's not even a New York issue, it's a whole United States of issue for public housing. Public housing is our true affordable housing because if public housing goes, so do our renters, and so do our affordable co-ops. And we need to make sure that we have public housing in the state of New York, especially in the city, so people can have a way to live and making sure they have a roof over their head and not being homeless. We already have a homeless crisis, as we can see with Section 8. If you make a dollar or $2 more, like Ms. Morales says, they're homeless. Where else are they going to go?
Thank you. Thank you for pointing out this is, we've seen the national pattern in terms of the demise of public housing across the country. It drives very much why we want to make sure we, to preserve and protect public housing in New York City. Thank you. Ms. McFadden, I know you mentioned you are the first development to go through for the voting of the trust. Can you, can you tell us a little bit about what the process has been to date and how many residents you've been able to engage, and where do you find the challenges of communicating what is happening?
First, in order for me to be transparent, give me the first question only so I can respond to that.
Okay. I hear that. So the first question was, how many residents have you been able to engage with the voting process to date? And then where is the challenges in communicating what is happening and what you're working on?
Okay. I want to be fair with answering the question because it's been a lot of residents. My reason for not giving an actual number because when you do tremendous amount of resident engagement, you get a signing sheet. So I would have to calculate all of those to give you an actual number. But what I can say to be fair, my just recent, let me just think, I like to be fair. Last week, we had engagement with the president of the trust and its founder. She was there along with a host of NYCHA employees and residents. Turned out, when I looked around the room, we had about, in total, 100-something people that particular day last week. And what I would say that I find a little difficult with engagement, and I'm going to explain this piece. I have, I don't want to mention a senior name because I'm great with confidentiality. I have a senior, right? She lives at Nostrand Housing, and she has a aide, a home health aide. If you are senior that is not mobile, you're not going down to check your mail, you send your home health aide, right? People knocking on the door, you're not getting up to the door. You're sending your home. So actually, that particular senior is missing out, and I'll explain to you why. Because I didn't see her at none of my engagement pieces. That's what rose antenna with me. So I would say that all that good engagement that I was giving out throughout Nostrand Housing with the team, with the volunteers, she was missing all those pieces. But when I knocked on her door, she asked me, "Who are you?" I said, "I'm Ms. McFadden. I happen to be the president here at Nostrand Housing, and I know you and I know who you are. I know what apartment you in. That's why I knocked on your door. It's called a wellness check." And I hope other resident leaders do the same thing what I do. When you don't see Ms. Joanne or Ms. Mary come out her door with the permission of the management team, you do a wellness check. You're not just checking on that tenant about the engagement piece that's going on Nostrand Housing. You want to make sure that senior as well, she's not dead in her home. So I said to her, "You know, Nostrand Housing is doing a voting process." Of course, she was like, "What is that? I'm patient. I work with children at the Board of Ed, so I know how to talk with people. I know how to interact with people, and I know how to be patient with my seniors." I explained that to her. Guess what? I know when I walked away, she forgot, but it's up to me again to go back to reach out to her, and I hope that answered your question.
And we're going to talk more about this, for sure. Thank you. I mean, this is exactly the kind of engagement that, you know, I think many, for many hearings we've been talking about. What kind of supports are you receiving as a TA president to ensure you're able to do engagement? Because obviously, you're working full-time, and this is a full-time job.
Okay. First and foremost, I love the new NYCHA team. I'm not over-exaggerating. I'm all about fairness because I'm a type of person like this. If you treat me nice and you treat me with respect, even when I'm wrong, you can get 100% of me. But if you come at me yelling and screaming, I will shut down, just like a child. I will shut down. You can get 100% out of me just along your approach. It only takes two point seconds to be kind to anyone. NYCHA, new team under the leadership of Lisa Hayer-Bovin, Eva, Mr. Leroy, the president of the trust founder, Courtney. I don't mean to do that and get them overwhelmed, Mr. Brian Honig. They're always reaching out to me. "Ms. McFadden, we have some flyers for you." Ms. McFadden, even though you have a volunteer team of children in Nostrand Housing that's putting flyers up in the 32 buildings, that's going to each six floors with six apartments, we got a team that don't mind coming out on a weekend helping you. we got a team that don't mind coming out on a weekend helping you. And I really appreciate that support, because I'm not going to lie, if I get overwhelmed, they pick me up. Come on, McFadden, we need you. We work together. And that's all about teamwork. Teamwork makes the dream work. And most and foremost, the residents, they come first. We work for them.
Right. Brian, why am I not getting flyers that quickly? You've got some splaining to do with the other council members you don't call back. Thank you, Ms. McFadden. Ms. Morales, can you tell me a little bit about, you mentioned this billing situation for residents. What have you seen on the ground in certain Rad-PACT color that for us, for the record?
So initially, we had one development, Jonathan Williams, what used to be Jonathan Williams Houses, reach out to us. Because one year after they went through the conversion, they just received a list. It was like a four-page list of what repair fees would look like, from a nail to a tile. We definitely advocated on their behalf. I will say currently, because it's fair that I gave an update, that Congresswoman Velasquez's office got involved, and that situation was addressed, and it is no longer a thing, a rule. But I think the bigger picture is, what if those residents didn't know to come to their public officials, right? You have, to make us think about it, what if those public officials really didn't care, like Congresswoman Velasquez or the office I work for? What's going to happen to those developments? And that's the bigger issue. And another experience has been, when they do the, what I'm hearing and what I've seen is, when they do remodel the apartments, they're really shoddy work, right? I know one resident, two days later, after the windows were installed, they fell on her head while she was sitting on her couch. You have the appliances that may look pretty, because they're shiny and they look like stainless steel, but they're still poor quality. And then you have to deal with the possibility that now you may get charged for that, right? Those have been, and we had another development who also received a list of repairs, and that, again, we were able to address and put a stop to that. What I've realized is, there, and I will say, you have NYCHA staffers, especially at the Borough Office, who are willing to work with us, right? I'm not going to say they're impossible, but it shouldn't take that entire process to eventually get to a public official. Part of the issue is the lack of communication with the developers and NYCHA. Even though initially, they have these meetings and these agreements, I believe there's some loopholes. You know, in one specific development, they, 75 apartments received downsizing and eviction notices, and were threatened. It took our office to step in, to be able to bring in NYCHA, and they felt they were able to do this. And it turns out, NYCHA's like, no, they're grandfathered in under Section 9. So why didn't the developer know this, right? Why didn't their team? So I think that their communication needs to be better. I think for me, the same money, if we're pouring in millions of dollars to private developers, why can't we just pour them in to NYCHA? Because with all due respect, those making the decisions do not look like the residents, right? Do not have that experience, many of them, right? There needs to be more resident engagement. We need to build, there is leadership, as we see in this room here, right? There needs to be more, it needs to be led by the people. It is public housing. So I think, I hope that answered your question, but I guess, in all to say that, while we've been able to intervene, I can't say that that's going to happen for every development.
No, thank you. I think you point out, certainly, one of the mantras is, not only is public housing one of New York City's greatest assets, but the public housing residents themselves are the greatest assets. And how they are centered and not decentralized, and the fight around that is a serious one. And even how, I mean, even getting resident engagement to this point in the Rad-PACT program did not come because of the benevolence of developers or anyone else. It became because residents wasn't having it, and it's not the right thing to do, quite frankly. So I think there's certainly much to be gained, and we want to hear today more how are residents in decision-making roles here? How are they supported fully? And, you know, so I'm delighted to hear that there is improvements with what Ms. McFadden is mentioning in terms of the level of engagement and support that is received. We know that's not the standard. It should be. So I thank you for all your testimony, and we will hear more from the administration, and more to come. And thank you for your advocacy. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Wrestler and Councilmember Mealy.
We'll now call up the representatives of NYCHA. We'll just have one more resident on the pre-panel, Ms. Torres.
Good afternoon, everyone, Chairman, Woman Aviles, and all the council members. Today, I'm not going to use all the titles that I hold. I am going to talk to you as Aixa Torres, a resident of Alfred E. Smith Houses, and the needs that the residents have in terms of the realities. First of all, the need for having residents have more input into NYCHA in terms of decisions that are made. And even though resident engagement, and I have a good relationship, I actually chair, and I'll use this title, as a C-COP member, I chair the Resident Engagement Committee, and we have been working hand-in-hand with the resident engagement staff to do a guide, to do a template for the bylaws, looking at bylaws for those resident associations that are not incorporated and those that are incorporated. And so there has been a dialogue. However, when we deal with our apartments, right, and we deal with the quality of life that we have, and I just buried like, three people in Smith. One of them definitely 9/11 cancer. There were things that were not done. There has to be a better understanding of each development and their needs. Going to Rad is not going to help. Going to PAC is not going to help. Doing the Trust is not going to help. What we do need, all that money that is being spent should go into resident training management, to give the residents the power to make educated decisions about our developments and the quality of life that we have. And I say this very humbly, that I have been fortunate, that I have residents who are knowledgeable, who support the resident association. And so we've been able to do a lot of things in Smith. But at the end of the day, we still need those kind of trainings. And I think that the money would be best spent in teaching us about resident management, teaching us those things that are hands-on. And also, understanding, right, that residents from public housing are human beings, and that, you know, we pay taxes. A lot of residents in Alfred E. Smith have served this country. Some have died. And so I say all of this to say that we can work, we can do a you and us. A lot of times for Smith Houses, it's been a you and us with NYCHA. And then we've had moments where it's been a we, and it's been wonderful, right? And I would hope that that's the kind of work that we can do moving forward. However, we have to be, as the 964, and that's the whole thing about Section 9. The regulations say we have to be part of the process from conception. And when we are from the conception, you'd be surprised. And for the record, we have a Supreme Court Justice that came out of public housing. I can tell you so many people that have come out of public housing who have been productive citizens, that it is, you know, it's beyond my 10 fingers, right? And so, that being said, I think that the new administration, right, needs to remember that and read, and really treat us with respect in terms of what knowledge we hold. I have lived in public housing for 60 years. Everybody's story is different of why I still live in public housing, but the reality of it is, that as a retired person on a pension in Social Security, I cannot afford anything but public housing, so that I can live decently with equality of life. And I think that people need to understand that. And I ask the council, when you give money, please, to the developments, make sure that some of it, and you make your decisions, besides the repairs and things like that, that you actually do for resident management, for those of us who think or know that we can actually manage our own developments and make better decisions than a manager who never been inside our apartments or ever lived in public housing to make those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Torres. You bring up two very important points. When it's an us, it works, and it feels good. And that is what we are striving for. It should be more of an us, charting forward in a similar path. And also, thank you for hitting on resident-managed corporations and the need for investment in the residents. Again, greatest asset NYCHA has at its disposal, and I look forward to hearing more from the authority around how it's going to invest, I'm sorry, I'm hearing crazy feedback, how it's going to invest in its residents, and in other forms as well, such as resident-managed corporations. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll now have the representatives of NYCHA come up to be sworn in. If you all could just raise your hand, I'll swear you in. And then if you could state your name and your title for the record, that would be great. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee, and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
And then if you could just identify yourself and your title for the record, that'd be great.
Jonathan Guvaya, Executive Vice President of Real Estate Development.
Lisa Bova-Hayet, I'm NYCHA's Chief Executive Officer.
Vladak Kniv, President of Public Housing Preservation Trust.
You may begin.
Thank you. Chair Alexa Aviles, Members of the Committee on Public Housing, other distinguished members of the City Council, NYCHA residents, community advocates, and member of the public. Good afternoon. I'm Lisa Bova-Hayet, NYCHA's Chief Executive Officer. I am pleased to be joined by Vladak Kniv, President of the New York City Public Housing Preservation Trust, and Jonathan Guvaya, NYCHA's Executive Vice President for Real Estate Development. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss our mission to bring billions of dollars of desperately needed investment to residents' homes. These critical efforts will improve the quality of life for NYCHA families today and for generations to come, and they will ensure that we remain a bastion of affordable housing in our city. I would like to acknowledge the comments that you will hear and have heard from residents who are benefiting from this work. Every day, my colleagues and I strive to make a difference for the families we serve, and this is exactly the impact we're endeavoring to make. Every NYCHA stakeholder is painfully aware of the need to take action now with bold and innovative housing preservation programs. There are currently more than $78 billion worth of capital needs across our portfolio, as manifested daily, to the detriment of residents by leaking roofs, bursting pipes, failing heating systems, inoperable elevators, and mold and lead that needs abating. Simply put, we need more federal funding to provide residents the quality of life they deserve. Today, I'll provide an overview of our plans to address these significant needs and issues through the Trust, PAC, and our capital investment program, strategies that will strengthen communities and ensure the longevity of public housing in New York City. Our housing preservation programs comprehensively renovate residents' homes while ensuring that residents retain all their rights and protections, including permanently affordable rent. These strategies also keep our developments public and make resident engagement a key focus of the process. The New York City Public Housing Preservation Trust is an exciting, first-of-its-kind path for public housing. The Trust, a public agency that was created last year and signed into law by Governor Kathy Hochul, will completely transform the homes of up to 25,000 NYCHA families, subject to residents' votes. Under the Trust model, NYCHA remains the permanent owner of the land and the buildings. NYCHA enters into a long-term ground lease with the Trust, while residents convert to Section 8 project-based vouchers, a subsidy worth double NYCHA's current federal subsidy. Similar to how other government entities raise revenue for capital improvements, the Trust will secure financing to fund comprehensive building renovations guided by input and partnership from residents at the development. Additionally, the Trust can employ procurement enhancements like design-build or construction manager-at-risk to bring better value to residents. After the renovations, the Trust will work with NYCHA to operate the properties, preserving the municipal workforce, many of whom are NYCHA residents. Resident participation is a fundamental component of the Trust's establishing framework. Residents will have a true role in deciding the future of their homes. From the very beginning, residents were involved in shaping the legislation that established the Trust, as well as the procedures for the broading process required by the legislation. Starting next month, residents of our first voting site, Nostrand Houses, will be able to decide whether they want to have their developments renovated through the Trust or PAC, or whether they want to remain in the current Section 9 program. Residents will be able to vote online, by mail, or in person. As outlined in the Trust voting procedures, the 30-day voting period follows a 100-day resident engagement period, where residents can get any questions answered in a series of meetings and events at their development. As of today, we have had individual conversations with over 67% of eligible voters through door-knocking, phone-banking, meetings, and events. We even opened a dedicated office at Nostrand to assist and inform residents. It's an exciting moment, and we look forward to announcing It's an exciting moment, and we look forward to announcing additional voting sites soon. While we've been engaging Nostrand residents on this historic vote, we've been building the infrastructure of the trust as a public agency. Earlier this year, Mayor Adams and NYCHA appointed seven members of the trust board, including two residents. Last month, the trust board appointed Vladak Kniff as President of the Trust. Ms. Kniff, who spearheaded critical sustainability advancements while serving as NYCHA's Senior Vice President for Sustainability, is overseeing the trust's day-to-day operations. Gillian McLoughlin, who previously served as NYCHA's Deputy Chief of Staff, recently joined the trust as its Chief Operating Officer. Lisa Lim, a veteran in the sphere of real estate law and affordable housing and also a NYCHA alum, was selected as the trust's General Counsel. The PACT program also leverages the more dependable and lucrative Section Eight funding stream to comprehensively renovate residents' homes, providing them with brand-new kitchens, bathrooms, windows, and apartment floors, updated common areas and building systems such as elevators, boilers, roofs, windows, and facades, and improved grounds including landscaping, lighting, security, and playgrounds. In addition to comprehensive repairs and building updates, including the abatement of environmental hazards, our PACT partners bring residents professional property management and enhanced onsite social services and community programming. After conversion, all PACT developments remain under public control. NYCHA remains the permanent owner of the land and buildings, administers the Section Eight subsidy, and continues to monitor conditions at a development following its conversion to Section Eight. Under PACT, residents keep all their rights and protections, including permanently affordable rent, succession rights, and the right to organize. NYCHA ensures that residents are involved at every step of the PACT planning process. To keep residents informed and answer any questions, we host regular meetings, including monthly meetings with resident associations, and conduct tabling, office hours, open houses, information sessions, and workshops. A PACT resource team is available to support residents by connecting them with trusted third-party advisors and consultants, and free legal assistance is available to residents via a PACT hotline operated by the Legal Aid Society. And we seek resident expertise and input to plan investments based on residents' priorities. Starting in 2020, resident leaders now select the developers, general contractors, property managers, and social service providers who will elevate their quality of life. In 2023 alone, resident leaders across 30 developments representing over 14,000 residents have selected PACT partner teams to provide their communities with tailored investments through the program. Together, our partners and residents have started to create detailed community plans to memorialize their planning and decision-making during the pre-development process. Overall, 138 NYCHA developments comprising more than 37,000 apartments are in pre-development, are under construction, or have completed construction through the PACT program. We are on track to comprehensively modernize a total of 62,000 apartments through PACT, dramatically improving the lives and quality of life for more than 142,000 residents. As Batances Housing Resident Association President Sabrina Hill once told us, "When PACT came in, it changed a lot of our lives. Everything was upgraded, from the bath fittings to the cabinets to the kitchens, the flooring. It's been amazing. I feel like due to the change, this is a better way of living. It's a big shift, and we love where we are." This sentiment is shared by residents across our portfolio, whose homes have been completely rehabilitated through PACT. NYCHA has worked with an external consultant to survey residents at those developments over the last year, and residents have expressed strong satisfaction with the renovations to their apartments, buildings, and grounds. The majority of residents who responded to the survey have also expressed satisfaction with their new property management company. We are committed to evolving the program and changing our approach to engagement and oversight as we hear directly from residents about what is working and what we can improve. At the same time, we're pursuing these vital housing preservation initiatives. We're putting the capital funding we receive to good use for residents, investing more than $1 billion annually over the next several years through a range of capital programs. While it's a fraction of the needs, this work complements our PACT and trust efforts to repair and preserve residents' homes in the near term, upgrading hundreds of roofs and heating and elevators and waste management systems, installing CCTV, lighting, and other security and safety enhancements at many of our properties, abating lead-based paint in thousands of apartments, and completing comprehensive modernization of several of our large properties. The majority of our properties are more than a half a century old and have not received the regular investment that all buildings need. Making piecemeal fixes is neither sufficient nor sustainable, and we must use every tool and resource available to improve residents' quality of life. By comprehensively renovating our buildings, transforming them into brand-new homes, we can wipe out the ever-escalating repair backlogs, provide safe and healthy homes, and implement the latest sustainable technologies, benefiting not just residents but our city as a whole, all while providing jobs and other economic opportunities for the community. The future of public housing in New York depends on the actions we're taking now. It is indeed a pivotal moment at the authority, and we appreciate your support as we continue down this path of stronger communities and longevity for public housing. Of course, we will continue to work closely with our partners, including residents and the council, as we make progress. NYCHA is committed to transparency. It's one of our guiding principles, and we look forward to collaborating with the council on Intros 646 and 648 regarding NYCHA's PACT program and vacant units. Thank you, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Sanchez, and we will actually start off with our colleagues' questions, because I know you have many places to go. We're going to start with Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you so much, Chair Vilas, for allowing us to ask questions first. And thank you to the residents who testified and to NYCHA for being here. I did have a question about air rights. I mean, that is a question that we get often when we're in our communities in terms of what are the sites that have been identified, what are the plans for air rights, and if that is a conversation that is occurring, what is the expected revenue at all for the sale of air rights across NYCHA properties?
Sure. To date, we have closed three air rights transactions, and it is certainly a valuable source of revenue that we put back into the host community when we sell air rights. They are complicated to use. You need a receiving site, and a lot of our developments are within, you know, they take up the entire block, so there are not a lot of receiving sites. But where there are opportunities, where we share a block with an adjacent landowner, there are opportunities to talk about air rights sales. So there are a couple of discussions that we're having right now. We always include residents. We want to understand what their priorities are in terms of how to use the proceeds, and so we should be announcing a few in the coming months, but there's not a huge pipeline of those deals at this time.
Okay, thank you for answering that question around the same line. Is there, what is the type of background work and due diligence that happens when you all are picking developers to work with? I know in my community, for example, there was a rezoning a few years back, and some of the developers unfortunately have records of not only exploiting workers but also dangerous construction sites, so I'm interested in knowing sort of what is the due diligence that is happening when you all pick developers?
Do you mean specifically for air rights or just generally?
In general, for PACT and RAD and these types of projects.
Sure. So what we've been doing over the last few years is actually, I think, pretty robust. We do basically a three-step process. The first is a prequalification process. So we, every year, we open up that process, and we have prospective developers as well as general contractors and property managers submit their qualifications to NYCHA. We review those qualifications, and they're either then prequalified or not, and if they are, make it to that prequalification list, then we draw from that list when we're putting out a request for expressions of interest, primarily for the PACT projects. From there, when we are contemplating a PACT project at a specific site, we are working with residents, and as our CEO mentioned, now residents review with us. Well, first, they actually inform some of what goes into the procurement, so we hear from them what they need and they want, and that's built into the procurement. Then during the actual process, they are reviewing proposals, and they also interview prospective respondents with us, and we take them on tours of work that's been completed by development teams that have either done PACT projects, or if they haven't done NYCHA work yet, we take them to sites where they've seen. So the residents can see up close and personal what they, what kind of work they've done, and then jointly, we make those selections.
One last question, if I may, around tenant engagement. I know that in your testimony, you were robust about saying in all the places where tenants can give their feedback and are welcome to give their feedback, but it still seems on the ground, when I'm talking to residents, that there is a lot of fear and a lot of hesitation with some of the PACT and RAD projects. So what do you feel has worked in terms of resident engagement and what hasn't, in order to understand the push, why the pushback continues? I think some of the questions that some of the tenant, the resident panels brought up are legitimate ones, and so, you know, as a council member, it's difficult for us to support projects if our constituents and residents of those developments do not. And so how do we reconcile that?
So I would recognize that the projects, the developments that have gone through PACT in your district, it is true, it was from an older era when we would put out a procurement, and we would do the review and make the selection on our own. So if you're hearing from residents in those developments, that is certainly accurate. Those procurements would have gone out around 2019. Since that time, we've been doing what, you know, you heard from our CEO and what I reiterated. So I think, again, having the residents involved early on so that they help shape the procurements and have them help, you know, again, review the proposals, interview the respondents, has been tremendously beneficial for us as a process, but also for the residents.
So I'd like to follow up on the air rights questions. Can you, can you tell us what three transactions have cleared, where?
So Manhattanville, Ingersoll, and Hobbs Court. Manhattanville, Ingersoll, and Hobbs Court.
Where is Hobbs Court?
Manhattan, upper Manhattan.
Upper Manhattan, okay. And you mentioned that there are a couple in the pipeline. Can you talk more specifically about that, like how many, actually, let me take a step back. How many of, in those three transactions, square feet of air rights were sold?
How many square feet? I can give you, I can send you the actual square footages when we, after the hearing, but in terms of dollar value, it's about $55 million in the aggregate between all three.
And so is, I guess for, let's say, Ingersoll, whatever the portion of that sale for Ingersoll, is that going directly back to?
Yes. Our commitment is to always put the dollars back into the host community.
And then who decides where, how that money gets deployed within?
We work with resident leadership to identify the priorities. And obviously, you know, we have a sense of what the needs are, so we want to make sure that it's addressing, you know, a fundamental need within the development.
And how much of the air rights are kind of in the pipeline or being explored to be sold?
Well, again, we do have a lot of, it's been well documented that we have a lot of underutilized development rights. The trick is how to actually use them, right? Again, when we have a lot of our developments that are essentially superblocks and we are the prime landowner, there is no receiving site to sell them to. So there are a handful of sites where we share a block with an adjacent landowner or multiple adjacent landowners, and there may be an opportunity to have those conversations. So there are not that many opportunities to sell air rights.
Do you have, do you have a specific number of projects that you're actively working on in terms of preparing for sale?
There's one right now, which I, is pretty public. We're working with the residents of Campos Plaza on both a PACT project as well as a sale of air rights to an adjacent landowner.
Okay. I'm sorry, I got, it goes in and out. I guess, Councilmember Olshey?
Thank you, Chair Vilas, and good afternoon. Wanted to start off by asking, I represent the 36th District, which includes the neighborhoods of Bed-Stuy and northern Crown Heights, and I wanted to ask, because there's been a lot of chatter in the many different NYCHA developments that I represent, are there any developments in my district that are being considered for RAD slash PACT or trust conversion?
Well, within your district, the Brooklyn Bundle closed, and it was completed as of a couple of years ago. I believe you're aware that we're at the cusp of actually closing the Reed Park Rock consolidation, which should happen actually in a couple of weeks. And then there's also Ocean Hill-Sty Gardens, which we would expect to close in later 2024.
That's you, yeah, that's you. It's not my district, but thank you for that. But are any, currently in talks, is there any engagement going on in any of my other developments?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, okay. And you'll notify my office when that will potentially happen?
Yes. And just to clarify, there are some buildings within Reed Park Rock that fall into both of your districts, so that's why, I mean, I was answering that question, but some of them are also in your district.
Right. I also wanted to ask, what savings has NYCHA incurred with the RAD slash PACT and trust conversions?
Well, with the deals that we've closed, we are addressing several billion dollars worth of physical needs. So, you know, those are liabilities that would otherwise be on NYCHA to address and the ongoing operations and maintenance.
So you would say that there are savings that are going towards investing into other developments, perhaps?
Absolutely.
The money that we've received from our PACT conversions is being used for operating, our operating needs, given the, the lack of sufficient funding that we get from Section Nine, from the federal government.
Is there a total amount of savings that you've all calculated since you started instituting the RAD slash PACT conversions?
So the deals that we have closed, so this is everything where the construction's complete or construction's underway, is addressing about $4 billion worth of physical needs. So that is a proxy for what we are saving, to your question.
So, you know, I've heard from many of my constituents and even on some of the panels that we've heard from today that, you know, folks are opposed to the RAD slash PACT conversion with their NYCHA developments, and I understand that, I guess the meaning for NYCHA to move in this direction is a lack of capital funds that it would need or would take to restore many of the NYCHA developments that we have across the city. Have, has NYCHA, or has the agency looked into the Infrastructure and Jobs Act, the bipartisan infrastructure bill that President Joe Biden passed last year, and any of the funds that will be going towards public housing, both in the needs of capital investment as well as in jobs training? I don't remember the young ladies, the young lady who testified earlier about job training for NYCHA residents specifically, but I think it would be a great idea to explore the monies that exist there coming from the federal government. Has there been any conversation that NYCHA's had with, you know, our state partners, with our federal partners, with HUD specifically, in bringing that money down? I think it was a trillion dollars that was allocated towards infrastructure and jobs.
Thank you for that question, and I'll answer it in my previous capacity. As the Senior Vice President for Sustainability, before I left, we've been able to secure approximately over $180 million through the various IRA and grants related to micro-mobility infrastructure, green infrastructure. So to the extent that we're able to maximize every application that we could submit, I believe we submitted 22 applications for various grants on all levels. Some of it actually did go to what we called and continue to call the Clean Energy Academy. So, to answer your question, we, NYCHA has tried its best and will continue to try its best to pursue all grants that are out there.
Have you secured any funding from any of those applications yet?
About $180 million.
$180 billion, wow. Through HUD or to NYCHA?
Billion, $180 million.
Billion, oh.
I wish it was billion.
I got excited for a second.
And council member.
I know.
Yeah, that was.
That'd be amazing. Keep on working hard, you guys. You're almost there.
So, so council member, all the testimony I heard.
Sorry, just one second, I just have to square you in.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
Yes, Brian, and my name is Brian Honan. I'm a Senior Vice President for Intergovernmental Relations for NICA. Council member, all the testimony I heard from residents, I totally understand. These are very complicated programs. Many residents have lived in public housing, some of them for their whole life, some of them for decades. This is the program that they know. This is the program that has provided them with stability. And we are asking them to have a lot of trust in an agency that, let's face it, for years has not been trustworthy. And so we're asking them to take a big leap of faith in a program that is complicated. But, you know, four residents who have gone through this program. In Councilmember Mealy's district, I remember about 10 years ago, we, we invested in Saratoga Square, which is a senior development, which has totally been transformed. And to this day, 10 years later, it is still looks beautiful. Councilmember Restler's district, Independence, Williams, Warren Street, all these developments that, you know, it is now today, almost the end of October, and I have not heard from the residents there about heat once, which is amazing, because usually I would have been out there several times a week because they had a mobile boiler for over a decade. In Councilmember Sanchez's district, I was just with Ms. Williams at Bailey Houses, where she said she was going to leave NICA if not for RAD and PACT, and now she feels hopeful for the first time. In your district at Armstrong, the development was eating itself alive from the mold inside of it. And today, the residents there opened up their doors proudly to show us their apartments. This program is scary because it's a big change. But I dare anybody to show me a development that has gone through the program after all the construction is done and show me a development where you say things were better before.
Could we, sorry, I'm done after this. Can we schedule a walkthrough of Armstrong houses together?
Definitely, we'd love to do it.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Brian. I, I think that needs to be reframed a little bit. Better than before, when it's really bad, is not a good comparison. I understand your point, right? There are improvements. And then we have to acknowledge where there are improvements and residents are are living a better life that they deserve in a unit that is healthy and worthy of them. So, you know, we want to acknowledge where there have been absolute improvements and supports. But those stories bring no consolation to those residents who are in, in conversion processes or who haven't been converted at all, who are sitting there, right? And, and those are the residents and the units that we are deeply concerned about. And so, so yes, we have to acknowledge where there have been improvements and a lot of hard work put in for sure. But daring somebody to say they're going to go back to what it was before, knowing it was terrible before is, is like not makes much sense.
And council member, maybe, I'm definitely understeating it, but, you know, some of these developments, like Patanzas was mentioned earlier, Baychester was mentioned earlier. These are model places to live now. And if you look at the places, you know, and they're not only like the best NICA complexes around their area. In some cases, they're the best housing complexes around the area. These are places that people are proud to live in. One story I tell over and over again, you know, somebody told me now, I'm the one who hosts the holidays, you know, in my apartment now. I never was able to do that before. Why? Because I'm so proud of where I live.
Definitely sounds like stories I've heard of of NICA residents in the past, for sure, before all PACT conversions. Let's move on to Councilmember Restler.
Well, firstly, thank you, Chair Aviles, for your leadership and always holding exactly the right hearings on the most important topics. And appreciate the opportunity to ask questions. Am I supposed to call you president or what am I, I feel like I've called you chair forever and now there's a different chair and I don't know what to do?
Everyone loves to call me chair, but I'm, you could just call me Lisa. That would be probably the easiest.
But not president?
Not president.
All right.
You can call Vlada the president.
I can call Vlada president. Well, I'll call you Ms. Bova Hyatt for the purpose of this hearing. And if you come up with a better way for me to respect you, please let me know. Firstly, thank you for coming to testify today on this important topic. And congratulations on bringing Jillian back to NICA and into city government. She's one of the most talented and dedicated people I know. I have been incredibly impressed by Vlada's work on sustainability. And I've said at this committee many times that I feel like NICA is doing the most innovative work around sustainability of any city agency. So you're going to have to continue to prioritize that at the trust. And I hope that this is continued to be a major priority across the Housing Authority. So it's that it's that we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul on this one. But congratulations on the appointment. Looks like you're building a great team at the trust. I am hopeful and optimistic in the trust as a model. But I'd like to focus my questions today about RAD and PACT. As Brian so eloquently mentioned, and that was a great speech, Brian, I hope that you guys put a recording of that online. I was like, you know, I got a little teary on that one. But, but you've been doing this a long time and you do it well. The, you know, my concern is that, is the unevenness in RAD and PACT. You're bringing a lot of different developers. Some of them, I think, are doing good work and are responsive to tenants. Others, I'm concerned, are not. And I'm just trying to understand, you know, we look at open data violations and see several developments with persistent violations that are very concerning. A fair amount of money has been put into these developments already on the renovations. But how are you all effectively monitoring ongoing issues relating to mold, failing elevators, pest infestations, and making sure that we're holding the less good actors accountable? Because, look, I don't trust any developers ever. That's just my rule in approaching the world. Salud. And inherently, some are going to do a less good job than others. So how are you making sure that the folks that are doing a less good job are performing? And that, just the corollary question that, and this is an area that's frustrating to me, and Brian always gets surprised when I say this. But I, some of my RAD and PACT operators are not as responsive to tenant concerns around repairs and day-to-day issues as they're accustomed to. And it's been frustrating that they can't get a hold of the staff in the right ways. And so these are areas where I think there's opportunities for critical improvement. I'm actually just going to keep asking my questions because I think Jonathan can keep track of this stuff as I'm going. And I know, not Chair, Ms. Bova Hyatt can as well. The other things I just wanted to ask are, can you confirm that all NICA RAD-PACT developments are guaranteed a right to counsel for tenants that are eligible for it? And the other thing that I'm concerned about is we are seeing that we want to make sure that tenants in our RAD-PACT developments are afforded the same rights as NICA tenants are. And I've been, firstly, I wanted to make sure that NICA, well, firstly, I'd like to ask that NICA revisit the transfer system for RAD and PACT. If a tenant who's living in Jonathan Williams wants to transfer, they're really limited in what they can do. What we had agreed, as Brian will remember and Jonathan will remember, was that between Berry and Jonathan Williams and Independence in South Williamsburg, that you'd be able to transfer between them. We have not seen that happen. We'd also been told that there would be a priority for Brooklyn residency. After years of negotiation, that has not happened, as far as I can tell. So those are two areas of localized concern in in South Williamsburg. But more broadly, giving somebody a voucher and saying good luck is not the same as helping somebody transfer within the NICA system. And I believe that these developments, RAD and PACT developments, are still part of the NICA family, as I think you do too. And so I really hope that you'll revisit transfer policies so that somebody who wants to leave Jonathan Williams and stay within the NICA system can move, whether it be to a trust development with Nostrand or to a NICA development at Taylor-White, wherever the heck it may be. So I just asked a lot of questions because I already gone over time and I'm still over time. So if you could try to do your best to answer them all, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Okay, so in terms of construction quality and ongoing maintenance, in 2020, we established a number of teams within both the Real Estate Group and within NICA to ensure compliance. Within real estate, there's an asset management team and a design and construction team. Both of those teams are constantly looking to ensure that a minimum standard is applied in terms of the construction across. So we wanted to make sure that there wasn't variation from development to the development. And it is true, some of the early projects, you will likely see some variation because those teams did not exist. Certainly from 2020 and going forward, that is the focus. We want to make sure that there's a common set of materials used, construction processes, et cetera, across the portfolio. And then that construction team, design and construction team, also has folks that are going out every single day doing inspections and making sure that the construction is, you know, fulfills our expectations. On the asset management side, we require monthly reporting on a whole range of issues. Tickets, resolution on those tickets, legal proceedings and the like. So we are making sure that the, that the developers are, and the ongoing property managers, are responding to the needs of the buildings either during construction or post-construction into the stabilization period like the developments in your district are. And I will say, one of the things that we've done is we've established a number of thresholds for, you know, particularly challenging areas, the pillar areas that are part of our HUD agreement, so pests, moles, leaks, et cetera. All of those have been, all of the metrics that we use have been harmonized with what we apply to NICA. So there is no disadvantage to being in the PACT program and is the same as being within, within conventional NICA. And we track every month. So if we are noticing that, you know, there's an uptick in work orders or if resolution time is slowing down, we have conversations with the development teams. And has been said in prior hearings, we have the ability to replace property managers if we need to. We have not come to that yet, but we will if we have to.
But you haven't done so in any.
We have not had an occasion yet to do that.
Or push to replace staff if there's staffing issues or push the developer, development teams to invest more resources? I mean, it's just, it'd be helpful if you could demonstrate accountability for the folks that you don't think are doing as good a job as you should, as they should be. As Brian said, everyone's taking a leap of faith with this program. There's a ton of pushback. Some developers, and I see it in my district, I think have done a good job. I get very few complaints. I'm very happy that there's no heating issues in Independence, but that doesn't mean that tenants are happy with the conditions day to day. And I feel like we don't have the mechanisms for accountability that we used to with NICA to really push you all. It's a lot harder to do it with a third party. And how are you demonstrating that you're holding them accountable? What record do you have at this point, three years in, to show that accountability?
Well, we do, I mean, I don't want to get into personnel and HR matters, but I can say that before we get to the point of removing a partner, we do have those kinds of conversations. We have had issues where, and again, I'm not going to get into personnel, specific personnel matters, but where we've had conversations about staff needs to be replaced because they're not serving the residents. So if there are still persistent problems in the developments in your area, we can have a conversation and surface those and have those conversations with the, with the PAC partner.
I just think it would be helpful, if you're going to persuade everybody that we should be supportive of this, demonstrating how you're holding developers accountable who may not be living up to our collective expectations would be helpful. Without naming names or giving specific examples of the developments, you know, and the team, showing what you've done to improve the responsiveness in the conditions would mean a lot. And I'd strongly encourage you to think about how you can give those examples to the committee and to the public moving forward to demonstrate that you're taking this seriously.
Thank you.
And then just on right to counsel, transfers, both within the three Brooklyn-South Williamsburg developments and transfers more broadly, if you could comment on those briefly. I'm sorry, Chair Aviles.
Sure. PACT residents, like any other tenant, do have the right to counsel. And your second question with respect to taking the transfer system.
Transfers both broadly for a RAD and PACT tenant to be able to transfer another NICA development? Think that policy should be revisited? Is that something you'd be open to considering?
Yes, that's, that's, the, the simple question is, or the simple answer is, yes. We are taking a very hard look at our transfer system and are absolutely open to expanding the parameters within which a resident can, can. So more on that.
Great, we appreciate that. And then lastly, as Mr. Gross walks into the room on cue, the transfers, my ten associate president from Jonathan Williams, transfers between the three South Williamsburg RAD-PACT developments, Jonathan Williams, Independence and Berry South 9th, and the Brooklyn preference upon vacancy were two things that we negotiated quite painstakingly over a period of years, but haven't yet seen incorporated into the policies of of NICA and the RAD and PACT operator.
I think we can follow up with you on that separately.
We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Just to, just to follow up very quickly, thank you, council member. Is there, is there a current policy that is developed for all RAD-PACT bundles? Or in terms of transferring, or is it dependent on the boroughs?
No, not at this time.
Councilmember Mealy?
Hi, and congratulations. And I want to concur with my colleague, Brian Honan, really did a great job on that. But I have a couple of questions and I hope I can get them answered quickly. I have to talk about the trust, in your statement, Chair. You said the trust will work with NICA to operate properties preserving most municipal workforce, many of whom are NICA residents. Arthur Warren, it's not, he's not in my district, but he calls all the time and say, NICA no longer gives the community the jobs that is supposed to be set, set aside for NICA employee, NICA residents. How is that program going? How many of NICA residents are getting some of these jobs on these contracts with these developers?
Thank you so much for that question, council member. And I know Mr. Warren very well. He's, he's had me out to his development at Long Island Baptist plenty of times. And so, so with the trust, the trust is going to retain the municipal workforce. Those are NICA workers.
But how many workers are the residents?
Yes.
What was the name of, it's a number to that program. What's the name of it?
So, Section 3.
Section 3. He harasses me on that.
Twenty, so about 22% of NICA workers are also residents. So.
Do you have a breakdown of that? Because just with Long Island Baptist, I haven't gotten any from my district.
So what Mr. Warren, what Mr. Warren complains about, he just had a new boiler placed, you know, in his developer, development. And he's looking for new hires on the capital work. And so.
Isn't that section should have been doing it years ago? And this is not one year he'd been calling me in regards to it. So something is wrong with that. We have to address that. We could talk about that later. But that's a major issue. And another issue I have is what audit, review or oversight is done by NICA of the developers after they finish their work?
So as I mentioned earlier, we do have an asset management team within the Real Estate Group. And we collect monthly reporting on their performance around tickets, legal proceedings, so evictions, whether that's for non-payment or holdovers. Our leased housing department still oversees the Section 8 subsidy and there's ongoing.
I have it open where someone could see how often you checked on the developer after the work is done.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Do you have anything that the community could see that after the work is done, you have audited them? They have done the work properly? And I believe one of my colleagues just put some legislation in, in regards to that.
Yes, so.
Do you have anything documented?
We do, we put together monthly reports. So far, it's internally. Internally, but we are planning to put up a website that will, or rather, put it on our website, a dashboard that will, that summarizes the performance for each of the developments.
Can I have one more question? That's something. Over the summer, Related and Essen, the developer chosen for the Fulton-Elliott Chelsea PAC conversion, announced they planned to demolish existing NICA buildings and replace them with a campus of mixed, new mixed-use buildings. Where, where is that plan in the process right now? Because Mr. Honan know. Because Mr. Holden know that I had HOPE Six in my district, and they knocked it down, and not one tenant is back in the new housing there. So we don't want a repeat program to happen. So what safeguards do the community or this, this development, not in my district, but I'm concerned about the whole city at large? We need sustainable, affordable housing, and NICA is that. And if we outsource it, we will not be able to live here anymore. And I have one quick question. You just said that people will still be living in NICA. And the developer, when I came in, sorry for being late, I came in and one of the tenant leaders was speaking. He said the contractor was kicking the tenants out, but only by them coming to the organization, they had to tell them, no, they had secession to stay there. Imagine if that, those tenants did not go to that organization, they would have been kicked out. So what safeguards are we doing for our residents?
So on Fulton and Elliott Chelsea, well, first I'll say, obviously, there were challenges and weaknesses with the HOPE Six program, not just in New York, but across the country. So--
But mine was egregious.
Yes.
Not one person came back.
Right. I agree.
And they still talking about it today.
Absolutely.
And that was 20 years ago. So you know that hurt my community.
Absolutely, I understood. And, you know, one of the things that the federal government came up with was the Rad program, which addresses a lot of the shortcomings of that program. And that's the national version of this. In New York, we worked in 2015 with a whole round of stakeholders to build in extra protections. So the Rad program here has a lot more protections than HOPE Six ever did. And I would say that with Fulton--
So if Park Rock in my district, they, they said they were bamboozled, really. If they want to op out, is there any chance for them to op out now? And the contractor just called me, so I'm looking forward to sitting down and talking to the contractor. That's a good thing. But I'm meeting with them. What can I tell them now?
Well, we are working towards--
And I'm finished, Chair. Thank you for giving me this lead.
We are working towards the closing of that transaction. It will be in middle of November. So that conversion is going to happen in the coming weeks.
Almost a done deal?
Yes.
Well, they came to my advisory board meetings, and the community should know, every fourth Saturday, we meet. And the whole Park Rock came to my office, and they're really concerned about it. They don't really understand it. So I'm looking forward, maybe someone can meet with me and them to make sure that we can reassure them that maybe it'll go well.
Absolutely.
Or maybe it won't. But we're going to start fighting now.
Did you want me to address the other questions that you raised?
If the Chair give me the latitude.
So Fulton and Elliott Chelsea, as, so Rad has been used in New York so far for strictly preservation. It has been used in other parts of the country to do rebuilding. We see the Fulton and Elliott Chelsea project as a PAC-Rad project. It is not separate, it is not a new program. It is basically using the same tools and latitude that HUD has given other public housing authorities across the country to bring to New York. So it is going to be a PAC project, or Rad project, with all the rights and protections that are in all of the other preservation projects that we do.
Love to meet with you.
Oh, and in terms of the timing, so we are going to begin the environmental review process in the coming weeks. We expect to issue the notice of intent to start the environmental impact statement process in the middle of November, and public scoping hearings will happen in early to mid-January.
Councilmember, I'll be in touch with you, and we'll come to your next meeting.
Thank, thank you, Chair, for this important hearing.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, thank you so much, Chair, and thank you to the team for these very helpful prep materials. Hi, hi, NICA, how, how are you? Hopefully, that's okay, but we know there are challenges. So I, I'm going to pull a link in Wrestler, and I'm going to ask a million questions and hope that I can get responses to many of them. But I wanted to start with the trust, and in particular, you know, start with some of the very strong hesitations that residents had moving into the process. You know, I was ultimately supportive of the trust myself, but with, you know, considering it as an extremely imperfect tool that injects the private market into a space where the federal government is refusing year after year after year to, to participate. And so, you know, some of those protections, some of those hesitations that tenants had, and I'm sure folks continue to have, were around tenant protection. So I, you know, I'm familiar, of course, hi, Jonathan, with, with many of the ways that tenant protections have been strengthened in ongoing PAC conversations. But if there are additional ways that tenant protections have been strengthened or are being considered to be strengthened through the trust process, can you update on those? Second, you know, there, there were hesitations because, you know, nothing is a guaranteed revenue stream, including tenant protection vouchers. So just wondering your, your assessment about the guarantee of tenant protection vouchers as, as a way to leverage more investment into the trust process. And third, about voice. So it's, it's really impressive to, to see that 67% of eligible voters at NoStrand have been engaged through door knocking, phone banking, and meetings. You're welcome. You took a staffer from my office who's working on that now. I miss her, she's great. But this is, this is probably, without knowing NoStrand personally, probably not enough, and at the same time, so much for NICA to do, right? Those, those two things are always true. So my question with respect to the engagement at NoStrand is, how replicable is this? How is, how replicable is this going to be in other developments where the trust process is going to take place? And how are the tenants reacting? So those are my trust questions. And then my PAC questions. Thank you, Brian, for mentioning Ms. Williams from my district. So Ms. Wilson from my, from my district. So I have the Northwest Bronx PAC bundle. The vast majority of the buildings in that bundle are in my council district. It's actually, the vast majority of my developments are going to end up going through Rad. So first is a critique, and the second is a question. So the critique is going to the PAC resident meetings post-selection of a development team has been astounding. There are hundreds of people who are coming out to these. That was not the case when we were talking about PAC in the first place. There were, folks were not engaged, folks did not know about the process. So what are you learning about how to reach out to residents and, and get that kind of turnout at NICA? That's the critique slash question. And then the question is around coordination with NICA investments. So I have an example at Bailey Houses. There are roof repairs happening through NICA, NICA Capital Team. At the same time that they're, they're slated for PAC conversion, and it doesn't seem like there is communication and coordination with the development team. So how often is this happening, and how is NICA ensuring that we're not wasting funds because NICA is doing improvements that we're also financing a new team, a private team, to come in and also do? Thank you. Those were my million questions. Good to see everybody.
Sure. Thanks so much, councilmember, and you got a lot in, in two minutes. So I'll, I'll go backwards. So I just meant last week about the Capitol project at Bailey. The roof will be completed, it was already started, and it will be completed before the conversion is underway. There was also funding in there for the community center, and what we agreed on that is we're going to see where the scope comes in, and hopefully, the developer will be able to cover that work. If not, the elected officials allocated that money said that they would, you know, keep the, you know, park the money there, and if it needs to be invested, you know, into that property, they would do so. So SAM grants, which are state-funded grants, can go as an economic development project, you know, to any PAC-Rad developments. City capital is a little bit more complicated because there is a private entity there, but we, you know, we, we haven't had that so far yet, but it's something that we continue, we're continuing to have conversations with, with OMB. In terms of the--
Sorry, I didn't quite understand. So how, how is it coordinated? Is the, the scope of work reduced from the private team?
Yeah, so depending on the project, what we, what we tend to do is we will, you know, when a developer, developer is selected, and Jonathan could probably talk to this better, is that, you know, reason to developers is that this is something the tenants have identified as something that they want, if it can be, you know, and also urge them to make it part of the scope. So usually, it is a quality of life project. It is, you know, it is a playground upgrade, it is a community center upgrade, it is, you know, some, a security upgrade. These are things that often are part of the scope anyway, and if they're not, we encourage them to do so. And if they can do it with their funds rather than, you know, your discretionated dollars, you know, at the end of the day, I think people just want to see the project happen, you know, you know, whether it's done with city capital dollars or whether it's done with, you know, proceeds from these deals, I think in the end of the day, that the end goal is the same. So, so we work with them from the beginning, and we try to, you know, make the, in the end of the day, the goal is to make the project work. So in terms of the, you know, how, we're being slow with the elections on purpose, right? NoStrand is our first development, and, and we want to see how, you know, if, you know, how we can do this. We want to see how it goes. We're now announcing three, four, five, six elections at the same time. We do have a campaign staff that is there full-time. We are knocking on doors, we're making phone calls, we're putting flyers under people's doors, we're holding meetings, we're doing everything a traditional campaign would do, and, and we're reaching, we're reaching voters. I knocked on someone's door the other day, and they rattled off all the choices, and they, you know, and they opened their apartment door, and they asked me to look at their apartment because, and they told me their concerns. The concerns were around, you know, were around relocation and totally made 100% sense to me. But, you know, people, the hardest thing when you do this type of engagement is to get people to understand the issue. I think NoStrand would have been very successful, and I think people are ready to make the choice. They're going to have 30 days to do so, and they're going to have all the good government ways to do it. They're going to be able to vote online, they're going to be able to vote by mail, they're going to be able to vote in person. So we are hoping for a big turnout. When that is done, we're going to be able to, you know, decide, you know, can we run two elections at the same time? Can we run, run three? But I don't want to, I want to be able to make, have an election, have a post-mortem after that, and decide, you know, you know, you know, how can we scale this? And--
Jonathan, I think some of the other questions.
So in terms of getting people out for the PAC meetings, you know, I, again, I think it's a reflection of the change in approach that we've taken to engagement. We now start, and we would have done this with, you know, the developments in your district, we start with tenant leadership, right? We start to explain to them what the options might be, how PAC works, and when they get to a level of comfort, we expand that circle to the TA board. And when they get comfortable, then we start to have larger town hall meetings. And then again, as I've mentioned before in today's session and other hearings, you know, again, one of the, the game changers for us, we're having residents inform what we build into our procurements, and then also, you know, having them sit on the review committees and really interviewing respondents. And so I think that builds a level of, you know, investment in the, in the eyes of the residents. They feel like they have a stake in this whole process, and they tell their, you know, other residents to come out as well. It's paired with technical assistance, right? So we're no longer, you know, just on us to explain. We, we allow residents to, like, we fund a program where residents can pick whatever services they want. It doesn't have to be us dictating what it is they need to hear or learn about. Whatever, whatever piece of technical information they feel they lack, they can, they can access those funds. We also have independent resident advisors sort of modeled on what we had done with Fulton with CHPC, who was sort of this third party who was advising the residents there how to navigate the procurement process. So these days, we have at every development, that is standard.
And then just getting back to the trust, I think we're, we're continuing to try to answer all of your questions. But when, on August 1st, when the trust was first announced, we went out to NoStrand, the mayor was there, I was there, our board members, Ms. McFadden was there, and you could feel excitement, but also a tremendous amount of trepidation. And I think that goes to your early, earlier point, that people don't necessarily understand the technicalities of the, the trust. And we have spent hours and days, you know, we have incredible metrics around the amount of engagement, the amount of door knocking, the amount of meetings, both on Zoom and in person. I remember on that first day, there was a woman in the audience who was heckling the mayor. She was very concerned about where she was going to live and what the transformation was going to mean to her, and she was very angry, very aggressive. We invited her to a meeting that evening where everything was explained. And she started out, she was one of the first people to raise her hands to say that she didn't want any change at her development, as is her right. But by the end of the evening, she was like, "I'm for the trust." Now, that might change, who knows? But you see, as Brian said, you're knocking on people's doors, they actually understand what the three choices are, and that provides me a tremendous amount of hope that the engagement is there. And now I'm going to turn it over to Vlad to talk a little bit more about the trust generally.
Thank you, Lisa. And again, I'm six weeks in, so I'm still going out into the community.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I'm talking to the residents, I'm meeting with them directly. I want to hear back from them directly, what it is that they want out of the trust. To directly answer your question about the vouchers, we are coordinating with HUD, and we are confident that we can secure the vouchers. They haven't brought up any concerns. There are tenant protections, to answer your second question, there are tenant protections that are baked into the state legislation and, and the federal legislation attached to the vouchers. So I continue to be confident that those tenant protections will be available to the residents that opt into the trust. But the democratic process of the residents learning about the options, understanding what, you know, what the, the options are, is really, really important in this case, and we're hearing that from the residents.
Thank you so much. Hi, Leroy.
Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember, Councilmember Juan?
Thank you so much, Chair, Elise. My first question is for Queensbridge Houses. The last, last correspondence that we had with you, Brian Honan, was about the Queensbridge Houses sinkhole that is supposed to cost $2.5 million that the mayor's office has said that they have allocated, and we know that there was a total of, for this year alone, only in the council funding, not considering state and city additional funding, is $1.5 billion for NICA. So can you help me understand why Queensbridge Houses, the playground that they have, has been in sinkhole disrepair for more than two years now, and you continue to not make repairs?
Councilmember, I'm unaware of the funding that, that came just dedicated for the sinkhole, but certainly, I can contact colleagues at its city hall to find out more about that. In fact, I just had a conversation with Stanford OB the other day about that, and I'm not aware, but it's, it's fine. We do have 1.5, a $1.5 billion budget, but it's not all capital, it's much less than in capital, throughout a portfolio that is, you know, over 300 developments in, in five boroughs throughout the city. So, yes, I totally--
But can you help me understand, then, the process in which, how you determine how to prioritize capital funding? Because if children who do not have access to a playground, and it's also posing a threat to people walking on the NICA grounds, then what qualifies for you to make investments, to make repairs that has been years and years old?
Sure. Most of, so, and I'll let our CEO talk about this, but I could start off there. Most of our capital funding is dedicated to the pillar areas that were identified under the 2019 HUD agreement. Those pillar areas are heat, mold, lead, and pests--
Asbestos, pests.
And, and, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you're, you're going--
And, and pests, exactly. So that eats up most of our capital budget. While, you know, playgrounds are very important, and I'm definitely not discounting it, they do not fall into that category. And so this is not, you know, this is an agreement that is, was negotiated by the city of New York, the Southern District, and HUD, we have to adhere to them, they have definite deadlines, and that's where our investments are going to. I totally understand, I'm not discounting the frustration that I hear in your voice, that I hear from the residents in Queensbridge, but, you know, this is what, you know, this is what we're, we're dealing with-- is what we're, we're dealing with, a limited budget.
Okay, because I also want to acknowledge that we have Samantha from Congresswoman Nidia Velazquez's office, who has been extremely supportive of Queensbridge residents, and we also sent you a letter with the State Assembly member, as well as the State Senator, asking you to make the repairs now for multiple years. My next question is for Woodside Houses. Can you confirm that Woodside Houses now fully has heat and hot water, because we have not for many, many years?
Yes. Woodside Houses is back, not only mobile boilers anymore, it is 100% back on the boilers that are, you know, in the heating plant. NITIA spent the money in order to make sure that happened. We're still waiting FEMA funding because that, you know, development was hit really hard from Ida. We have not been reimbursed one penny for that. But the five mobile boilers that were there are no longer in use. The chimney has been replaced. Millions of dollars have been spent, thousands of hours have been spent, and a lot of advocacy, advocacy from your office, from the other elected officials, you know, to make sure that we were, you know, we were doing that work was, you know, definitely, you know, help there too. But I'm happy to say that the, we're back on to the heating plant there and also happy to say that we're hearing fewer complaints.
Okay, so for Woodside Houses, like you just mentioned, for Hurricane Ida, we had three to four feet of rain, of rain flooding. And just recently, two weeks ago, we had another three to four feet of rain that flooded out the senior center, the Children's After School Program Center, and the community center. What is the actual update or the status of the cloud burst technology that was committed by NITIA for Woodside Houses?
Sure. And I'm going to let, ask my colleague, Vlada, to talk a little bit more about this, but I will tell you that, you know, it is, it is something that maybe we could talk offline about, because I think if, you know, together, we can also go to FEMA with the other local elected officials, because this is something where they can be helpful, and this is something where we've seen, it's been frustrating. Let's just put it that way.
I'm happy to answer in my previous capacity as the Senior Vice President for Sustainability. Applications to FEMA have been submitted and we're awaiting approval, but we have also went ahead and started to implement the Clean Heat For All program. This is the development where you seen 36 heat pumps, window heat pumps that have been installed. And the idea there is that once the technology's proved out and the residents are happy, it would be scaled across the portfolio and that we don't have to deploy centralized infrastructure typically in the basement that would not be protected if there's another rain or cloud burst similar to the one that happened during Ida. And so that's the approach there, and we're very happy with the results so far.
So can you give me a timeline on what we can expect for cloud burst technology? So you said that you applied for, you applied for it and you're waiting for approval. Who are you waiting for approval from and what is the timeline after you receive that approval?
I would have to get back to you. It is, I haven't had an update in a while since I started my new role as the President of the Public Housing Preservation Trust, but NITIA can get back to you on those timelines.
Okay, we'll be following up with the Congresswoman's office, my office, the State Assembly and State Senator. And then my last question is for rat mitigation. We've had rat proliferation and pest proliferation at Queensbridge Houses, Ravenswood Houses, and Woodside Houses, so much so that people had to be transferred because the rats were living on top of the human beings in these houses. What are you doing to make sure that we have a more, more aggressive rat mitigation plan for those NITIA houses?
We're going to call up Eva Trimble, she is our Chief Operating Officer.
Just very quickly before you, could you raise, would you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember. Our pest control department has been very active at Queensbridge and Ravenswood as well with the, with the rat complaints. We've done extensive baiting as well as borough closures there. We're happy to follow up with you and give you more details about the, the work that we've been doing there.
Okay, we'll follow up, because the TA residents from all three NITIAS have asked us to request more aggressive mitigation, even within the last week, because they're seeing more and more rat infestations and they are just so frustrated.
Absolutely. We actually have a, a new rat grounds crew that we just started a few weeks ago, and I'll, I'll talk to the team to have them sent out there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. The issue of keys, the keys that are more automatic than a regular key, key fabs. And so, as you know, Wise Towers is going through many challenges because of PACT rad. We're working on them, you're very responsive, and if it wasn't for Rosalba Rodriguez, it would be a mess. And she's there almost every afternoon taking complaints and then forwarding them to you, and I appreciate the response. But two questions. One, what about the keys, because they're not working? So what are we doing about the key situation? And then second, as you go into the trust, what are you learning, not just in, in, before the project goes, but while the construction is taking place? That's the problem we're having. So what are you learning from the rad, PAC construction process that might be helpful for the, if there is a trust process?
I can, I can talk a little bit about what we're sort of envisioning for the trust. It, the, the trust is likely be a mix between capital delivery methods that NITIA uses and what PAC is using. One of the things that I'm hearing, it's interesting that you brought up the, the keys in the conversations with the residents. Security is one of the top concerns, so that's something that we're taking back and considering that to be in the scopes. Construction will likely be as a result of two alternative delivery methods that are available to us under the legislation. We earlier spoke about Polo Grounds and the design-build delivery method. That delivery method is available to the trust, and that will be likely the way that we would proceed. There's also construction management at risk, another delivery method, and those, those delivery methods are robust in being able to make sure that we manage construction in, in a, in a transparent and public way.
But the, but the problem with public safety is the following. If you're in a fancy building and your key fab doesn't work at midnight, you call the doorman. There's nobody to call at NITIA. So I really need to understand, just, it's an example, it's a real example, the keys do not work, the computer's not working, it's midnight, you're home with your family and you can't get into your apartment. So I, I think you should get rid of the key fabs for the individual apartments, not necessarily for the front door. I'm just saying this is coming up. Is it coming up anywhere else? It's coming up at PS 139 too.
So on the, so on the PACT key fab issue, and Eva can speak to the NITIA, it's a similar issue for, for NITIA itself, but I, you know, PS 139 and Wise, yes, it's absolutely been frustrating. There have been some technical glitches, thanks to Rosalba, you know, she raises these issues with me.
Everybody knows Rosalba, the whole city knows Rosalba.
So I think we are actually, that should be, that whole issue should be close to being resolved, and if not, we will continue to press the development team to, to get it fixed, because it's unacceptable that, from time to time, they do not work.
Thank you. Yes, we're aware that there, there are key fab issues across many, across the portfolio. One of the things that we've been trying to remind residents is that there, while there's not, you know, a super on site, the CCC is 24/7. And so that they can call and we can send someone out there to help them get in. We don't want to ever see someone locked out of their building. So we do have 24/7 teams that will come and help. And so please, you know, encourage your residents that you speak with to, to call the CCC if they ever need it. In addition, we, our Office of Safety and Security works closely with, with the door manufacturers and the intercom manufacturers to try to update the fabs. It is important that we keep phone numbers up to date, because it is linked to the phone numbers, the intercom systems, and the fabs are assigned to individuals. So it's very important that we work closely with our Office of Safety and Security and residents to keep their information up to date. If they need another FOB, they reach out to Safety and Security and we'll issue that to them.
Okay, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point, but I can just let you know, you can't leave people, the CCC, I don't know when you show up. There is no super necessarily to call, come on. And it is, you know, it's 1:00 in the morning. So I do think you have to be very careful, because it is a very different experience than a building that has a doorman downstairs. And if the key doesn't work, you're going to have to go back to the old key. Something to really take into consideration.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. So I, now, now the fun begins. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it back a little bit to the beginning and would love to really speed through much of these questions for the record. So forgive if some of them may be duplicative, but we want to just be clear on the record. So you mentioned in your testimony, Chair, that 37,000 units are slated in pre-development under construction or completed construction for rad PAC. Can you provide us a breakdown within that 37, what each, the number for each of those groupings?
I can do that. So 5,830 units have construction complete, another 13,171 units have construction underway, and then the balance, 18,708, are in that pre-closing, pre-development stage, and we expect to close out all of those between 2024 and 2025.
Okay. How many PAC developments, oh, actually, you just mentioned that, the 18,000, the 18,000 units you're expecting to, I think I just confused that.
So those are in the process?
The ones that are closing in the last, in the next couple of years.
That's 18,700.
And that's 2023, 2024?
There's actually the Reed Park Rock that I mentioned earlier that's closing in a couple of weeks, and then the balance will be 2024 and 2025.
And what is, what is NITIA's plan for the number of developments in Section 9? So we heard, and I just want to say, Brian, you mentioned that majority of your resources are dedicated to the pillar areas. I'd like to hear, what is the plan to address, obviously, traditional Section 9 needs and repairs? And more specifically, I'd like to know, what is the breakdown between the money that is allocated to the pillar areas and what is remaining, and how does that, how does the remaining resources get allocated?
Oh, I can start. So the balance of the Section 9 portfolio, we have comprehensive modernization, which is, will address 36, 3,690 units across four developments. We just announced the designated developers for St. Nick and Toad Hill, and that will be a holistic, comprehensive rehabilitation of those programs. As I also mentioned in my testimony, we have billions of dollars that we put into capital repairs each year across our developments, which supplements the operational work that is done by our operations team.
So the CompMod, the CompMod program is in one development?
It's, we just announced it in Toad Hill Houses in Staten Island and St. Nick, and that will provide a comprehensive, holistic rehabilitation, very similar to what's going on in Rad PAC and with the trust for Section 9, for those developments.
Okay, so, so for CompMod currently, it only covers two development of the remaining 300 developments?
We are, we're also using funding that we're, from rezoning at Wykoff and Gowanus Houses in Brooklyn to do what we call a partial CompMod there. We, it wasn't, it wasn't fully funded like St. Nicholas and, and Toad Hill. The truth is, you know, for the duration, you know, for the duration of the agreement, I think, you know, for the foreseeable future, all of the money that we receive from the federal government most likely be going, going to these pillar areas, you know, because we have, we have, we have a mandate to, you know, work to abate the entire portfolio of lead. We have a mandate to make sure that we, we improve steadily on mold. You know, pests were just raised by Councilmember Wan. Pests are a tremendous issue throughout the portfolio. We have, and we have, you know, and we also have a mandate to make sure that we're responding to close out heat and hot water outages. The thing that makes me optimistic is that on each of these areas, we now have subject experts and dedicated departments put in place that are under the COO's office that we never had before. So the money that we are getting is going to dedicated areas that are, you know, to, you know, that will better improve people's health, but also, they also are, have dedicated teams to do it before. It's not just unhodgepodge, it's not just, you know, one offs, you know, and, and we are seeing improvements and the numbers bear that out.
So just for the record, to make sure I'm understanding, because I, I've heard residents talk, talk in Red Hook about CompMod and how CompMod is coming and CompMod is going to happen, and I'm not hearing that that, I'm hearing it's only happening in, in two developments.
Yeah, so, so CompMod came, again, all things in, in modern NITIA, a lot of them come from the 2019 agreement. CompMod came from city funding from the 2019 agreement. It was dedicated to two developments, and St. Nicholas, St. Nicholas.
Only two developments?
Only two developments, correct.
For the record, okay.
We received additional, you know, funding from the Gowanus rezoning, and that is going to provide, you know, some very needed repairs for those developments, but not the same level as St. Nicholas.
Can you tell me how much money is dedicated to the CompMod for those two developments?
It's $740 million.
740 million. And 700, that is the totality of CompMod for the entire NITIA portfolio.
These, yes, exactly. And honestly, it would be great if we could do more, we just don't have enough money.
Okay. No, I think this, this is the purpose of the questions. I think there is a real misunderstanding that there is this program called CompMod that residents are waiting for, and in fact, there is no CompMod, with the exception of these two developments. I've heard in many developments, residents talk about the, the promise of CompMod, but we have no money for that.
We have no money for that.
That's correct. Okay, so that's, I want to, I wanted to check in on that. So in terms of the, so I guess, I guess if we were planning backwards, the entire, the capital budget for repairs that we mentioned, I think you said, Brian, 1.9 billion?
No, I think that was the number that Councilmember Wan, you don't mention, but I think she was thinking in NITIA's overall budget, which, you know, also includes both public housing and, and Section 8. So I think on the capital funding for, for a year, it's close to about 700 million.
How, how is that so if we, if 740 million is dedicated to CompMod?
So the funding for CompMod was city funding, that came from the 2019 agreement.
And what is the total capital?
Total.
For improvements, yeah.
Oh, for the, for those two developments or for?
The whole pie.
For the whole portfolio.
Why don't we just follow up with that?
Yeah, okay, we can.
Okay. All right. Can you tell us what the current role of the CEO of NITIA is? Just want to make sure.
I oversee the day-to-day operations of the portfolio. I also work with my executive team to think about strategic plans. I also work with my executive team to think about strategic planning across our portfolio, and I am very dedicated to making sure that affordable housing in New York City is here for generations to come.
And, and what is the current role of the Chair of NITRA? And the reason, obviously, we're asking this on the record is there is still a great deal of confusion and a lack of understanding that those roles were disaggregated. So for the record, can you tell us what the current Chair of the-
Sure, and just to be clear, the role of the Board Chair is actually set forth in our bylaws. As part of the HUD agreement in 2019, we undertook a transformation plan, and part of that was restructuring what our, what NITRA looked like. So as part of that transformation plan, the roles of the Chair and the CEO were bifurcated. There is no other public housing authority, to my knowledge, across the country that had both a Chair and a CEO. That was one and the same. As with any other board, the board approves all of our contracts. Jamie Rubin, who is our Board Chair, has a very deep history in both government. He was the former head of the State Housing Authority, so he comes to us with a lot of creative ideas in trying to manage our portfolio into the next century.
Thank you, thank you. And, and can you tell us a little bit about why NITRA saw the need to separate these roles?
It was part of the transformation plan that was required under the HUD agreement from 2019.
Do you remember why it was part of the transformation plan?
So, Eva, why don't you?
The rationale, I guess what I'm looking for is the rationale behind the separation of the roles.
Sure, as Lisa mentioned, the, the previous arrangement of having a combined Chair and CEO does not exist, as far as we know, in any other PHA, and it's really meant to be a check and balance, as well as providing a different type of leadership. So as Chair, they are, they are here to govern the Board, the Board of NITRA. So they lead the other boards, they can create committees through the bylaws, they help provide an overall governance and accountability, as well as setting the priorities. That is the role of the Chair. They are not involved in day-to-day business. That is the role of the CEO. And so it's, it's just a different form of governance, and as part of the HUD agreement, to go to your original question, one of the goals of the HUD agreement was to create a stronger governance and accountability structure for NITRA, and a key to that governance was, was improving our Board of Directors.
Great, thank you, thank you. So are, are these changes in leadership, after the changes in leadership structure, does NITRA believe that they have enough independence to voice concerns when city, state, and federal policy does not favor NITRA?
Can you repeat that question?
Yeah, so after, with this new structure that we have, separated roles, do you, do you feel that there is enough independence in those roles to be able to voice concerns and push back when there is discord in policy that is not favoring NITRA?
Oh, I think absolutely, and now we have two people who can do that, our Board Chair and our CEO.
Has that come up?
No, but I mean, both Jamie and myself are constantly advocating, both our city, state, and federal partners.
Do you think there are other changes that are needed to, for NITRA's governing bodies?
I think as we mature as an agency, there could be. Jamie and I are basically new-ish to our roles. I've been here longer. We were both appointed permanently in July, but as part of the long-term strategic planning, I think there are always changes that can be made.
How much, actually, how much does HUD contribute to the salary of the CEO and the Chair? Does it continue to do so?
The Chair is an unfunded, the Chair does not receive any compensation, and my salary, like every other executive member, is paid for by the COCC funds. We do not get funds from HUD specifically for my salary or anyone else's salary.
Okay, because in, in the prior iteration, they did contribute a significant amount of funding to the salary.
That I'm unaware of.
Yeah, so, okay. All right, let's, let's move on to the trust. So in terms of the blueprint, blueprint for change, the transformation plan recommends that NITRA may propose that the Chair and NITRA Directors become unpaid positions appointed by the mayor. Can NITRA provide us with an update on this recommendation?
Can you repeat that question?
Yes. In the transformation plan, there was, there was a recommendation that the Chair and NITRA Directors-
So the, the Chair of NITRA is an unpaid position?
Right.
Our Board of Directors receive a, a small stipend?
I think.
That's create, that's set by state statute, but they do not receive any other salary or any other type of compensation?
And that's, that'll be the, that's, that's for NITRA generally, and then for the trust, it'll operate in a similar way?
Oh.
Sorry, I think I'm conflating both of things.
Yeah.
The trust does have a separate board?
Yes.
It's a nine-member board. It is largely a volunteer position with a stipend, similar to NITRA's board.
And how will the two entities relate?
So we're two separate organizations. The trust was created by state statute. They operate separately right now, like any new organization. They are being incubated by NITRA because we were the entity that petitioned the, the state legislature and the governor to create it, but at some point, they will be completely on their own.
Got it. So are the, I think this is-
Of course, I should just add that I, the CEO of NITRA is the Chair of the Trust Board.
Yeah, I know, this is what's driving me crazy. I have all the titles wrong.
I know, so I am the Chair of the Trust Board, but the CEO of NITRA, but not the President.
And the Board members, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, so forgive me, forgive me, I'm absolutely confusing myself. Can you describe the organizational structure that you're planning for the trust?
Thank you for that question, Chair. Right now, we are three people that Lisa had mentioned in the testimony. We are not looking to grow much more. We're looking to have a core, small, central team, and as the developments opt in into the trust through the voting process, we are looking to hire capital delivery staff to support the recapitalizations of the developments that opt in.
Do you have a sense of, of how many staff you'll need to add in for capital delivery or the other pieces?
We're working on our operational plan as we speak. I'm hoping to update you on a more definitive answer in future council hearings.
The enacting state law requires that the Trust Board meet regularly. What does that mean for the schedule for the Trust Board meetings?
We have set a regular meetings. They're now bimonthly, and they are on the calendar. The next one is coming up on November 22nd.
Got it. And what are the planned agreements that the trust will have with NITRA?
I'm sorry, can, can you repeat the question?
What, what kind of agreements does the trust? The trust is a separate entity incubated by NITRA, but what are the operational agreements between these two bodies? I'm trying to understand where, is there accountability mechanisms? What are the MOUs? How, how are these bodies working together?
Yeah, so we are working on shared services agreements. We'll continue to work with NITRA through our incubation stage. We're also, are developing our procurement guidelines, as Lisa had mentioned and I mentioned earlier, under the enabling legislation. We have alternative delivery methods that are available to the trust, and so we are developing very clearly what that looks like and procurement guidelines. So again, we're in incubation stages, and week six for me, so I'm hoping to continue to have this conversation with the council.
So in terms of, obviously, you're, you're pulling this all together, and there's a lot to, to build, what are the, the major milestones that you're expecting to hit within this next year?
That's a great question. Of course, the election is about to begin at Nostrand. We are very hopeful that the residents of Nostrand would select the trust, and we can begin some of the processes there. The three work streams that would kick in right away are the financing, we'll be working with our financing partner, HDC, the leasehold, that, the reason the organization was created is that the leasehold will allow NITRA and the trust to access the Section 8 vouchers. You've heard from the, the NITRA CEO that, and frankly, the HUD agreement is a result of the failing building systems. I'm a building systems person, and so all of the things that are in a HUD agreement, pests, mold, they're failing systems, the plumbing systems that are failing, and so the, the trust was created to raise enough funding to be able to do a comprehensive upgrade, and so that's a work stream that will begin. The second work stream will be the disposition of Section 9 to Section 8 vouchers. That's a work stream that will be working very closely with NITRA on. And the last work stream is the procurement process for the actual recapitalizations of the buildings using one of the alternative delivery methods that I mentioned. And typically, that process takes about 18 to 24 months, based on what we've seen from PAC or the capital delivery programs.
And, and Councilmember, can I just add too? There'll be, continue to engage with throughout this process to make sure that residents have, because a lot of decision-making. So under the trust legislation, residents will have also the ability to choose the construction partners here. There will be a lot of work done at these properties. Some of these construction firms will be there for literally years, and one of the complaints that we heard from many residents, especially when we're contemplating this legislation, is that construction companies often, that the ones that NITRA, you know, has hired, you know, in the past, the work is not up, you know, not updone, you know, done to the standard of people like, the contractors aren't respectful, they don't know who they are, and so if they feel like, you know, that the residents are, you know, the ones who hired them, that we create a relationship, that there has to be a partnership, and if it was just done there too, that would only be half the job, the residents also keep a quality assurance committee, you know, together, so those firms have to come back on a regular basis to report back and say, you know, "When I came here, I said that we were gonna work six days a week in order to get the work done faster, and that we were gonna hire this many residents," and a quarter later, they'll, they'll have to give a progress report and, you know, make sure that they did what they said.
Okay. In terms of the, what's the criteria that you will be using to select developments for trust?
What I'll say is that physical needs assessment is one of the driving criteria is, and the deterioration of our properties, but across the portfolio, there are fewer and fewer developments that don't have comprehensive needs, and so for the trust, it's the resident leadership that would want to opt in, I think, would kick off the voting process, and I'll pass it on to Brian to answer on the voting process.
I'm sorry, before Brian, you take it over, the PNA you mentioned is a driving force, and clearly, the needs are significant across the board. Have you identified a, a threshold of need that would be met? How do you discern when everything is crumbling?
Yeah, I, I don't think there's a development in the portfolio that cannot use a-
Yeah, exactly.
Because, yeah, so-
So how do you decide?
So the, the high needs is, you know, every development, really. But I think what makes this different than, you know, past programs is we are looking to go to developments where residents are open to having a conversation, where residents are open to engagement, where residents are opening to say, "Okay, we'll have a vote." Not even necessarily where, where we'll have a vote to support the trust, it's we'll have a vote to do something different, and even after listening to all of the benefits of the trust, all of the benefits of PAC and Rad, residents can say, "You know what? I'm not convinced, and I'm going to, you know, at this time, we're going to stay as we are right now." And so rather than go in there like a bull in a china shop, rather than go in there and say, you know, "This is a program that we think is best for you," we're going in there and having conversations-
So the only criteria you're using is resident leadership that wants you to come in?
Exactly.
And that's a TA president that is inviting you to come in? Because that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about a, a survey that has gone out that the residents are saying, because that's the work that happens post, you're being invited.
So I could tell you how we did it at Nostrand. Yes, we did have many conversations with Ms. McFadden, that is 100% true, but Ms. McFadden is, you know, a very important person at Nostrand, she was-
Without question, Brian, I'm not, I'm not here judging that, I just want clarity. So it's upon invitation of a resident, a TA leader, is where you will, that is the criteria you're using to take the next step? And obviously, you're having some conversation, but that's the criteria that we're using currently?
It is not the only factor, right? So, so the TA leader at, you know, at Nostrand and other developments where we've had conversations said, you know, "I don't want to be the only one who makes this decision," and they said, "You meet with my board, meet with, you know, a larger group of residents." In some developments, you may, we may have a TA president says, "You know what? I do speak for my residents, and if we feel confident that this will, you know, that, you know, that we can, you know, we can move forward with that, we will do it," you know, in that way too. But I think it is better, you know, having many voices, not just one voice, I think we'll, we'll end up with a better outcome.
Okay. With the voting already underway at Nostrand, we know NITRA has a docket of developments that will soon undergo voting process. When will NITRA release the list of the next developments slated for the trust?
So, you know, as I mentioned earlier, Councilmember, we are being very slow, you know, here in, in our conversations. What I don't want to do today is rattle off a, a list of developments. We've made that mistake in the past. Ms. Torres was up here, you know, earlier in, in the day, and, and, you know, Ms. Torres really made her name fighting the Bloomberg administration on an infill plan that residents learned about in the media, and it was, it was, I, I, you know, having lived through it, I could tell you it was an awful way to start a program. And so I don't want to sit here and rattle off developments and then, you know, cause, you know, some anxiety for the residents. What I think is better is to have a conversation with residents, have residents agree, you know, to hold an election, you know, and then, you know, and then tell the public. So you all have told us, residents have told us, advocates have told us, let residents make these decisions, and we've heard you.
So you'll let us know when it's, when it's moving forward?
We will, we will let you know, you know, we will let you know, and we also invite you to participate.
Oh, boy. In terms of the, can you tell us what the timeline for transfer to the trust after a successful vote will look like?
Could you just please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
And if you could just state your name and your title for the record?
Andrew Kaplan, Chief of Staff at NITRA. So Vlada covered this a little bit before, so I'll just be very brief, but that 18- to 24-month timeline that outlined a couple of the different work streams, including the conversion process-
Stay closer.
Sorry, the conversion process, the financing arrangements in partnership with HDC, and resident engagement throughout are some of those steps that happened over the 18- to 24 months.
The IBO raised concerns about the amount of tenant protection vouchers that would be needed to transfer the planned 25,000 units into the trust. Has there been any prior approval or appropriation of the money to fund those vouchers as of today?
So each year, Congress appropriates new funds into, for example, the tenant protection voucher. voucher account. And housing authorities like NICA are able to draw down that account. And then, it becomes part of the ongoing obligation of the Section 8 program, just like any other project-based Section 8 voucher. So, that would be the same sort of thing that would happen with the trust, just as it does with the PACT program. And that happens towards the end of the process, when you actually formally go through and you submit and are able to get the vouchers for that specific development. Well ahead of that, there are conversations with all of the various offices at HUD. And we have a lot of experience doing this through the PACT program. And so far, there have not been any issues. We talked about this well in advance and have shared some of the timelines that we just went through with you. We continue to coordinate with them and, you know, so far, there have not been any flags.
So, you have no reason to believe that Congress won't delay appropriation or provide much less of the vouchers than you're expecting?
Not at this time. I mean, we continue to work with HUD.
Have you met the Congress? Okay. Got it. Given the uncertainty of the moment, you're still feeling confident in congressional appropriations? Sufficient congressional appropriations to meet both the PACT, RAD, PACT goals that you're working towards and the trust goals at the same time?
At the end of the day, I can't predict the future.
You're an optimistic man.
Nor will I try to. But just given the factors that, you know, we see in terms of the overall politics of the situation, that's the best assessment at the time.
What will you do if you do not receive the appropriation levels?
So, just in terms of what happens with a specific project and then, you know, if others want to chime in overall, you know, again, this happens in advance of the actual conversion, right? So, there's no risk to the project. It would be something that would be flagged well ahead of time. And at that time, we'd have to work with HUD, of course, first and foremost, about what the most appropriate course of action is. Sometimes that means, you know, some sort of delay, you know, into the next fiscal year. But it really is dependent on the specific situation. So, it's hard to say without having that specific case. And again, that hasn't happened yet, so we'd have to, you know, take it as it comes.
Sure, sure. So, in terms of, yeah, I guess along the same vein, I'd love to understand the discussions around the risks associated with using congressional appropriations also as a basis for the bonds and what contingencies you have in place to make sure that you're able to raise that capital.
Yeah, absolutely. So, there's a number of things that go into place. Vlada mentioned a lot of the legal pieces, so I won't touch on that because it was already covered. But just in terms of some of the ways that oftentimes financing is arranged, and again, this is just kind of giving examples, there are often reserves that are put in, there are often debt service coverage ratios, there are a number of different ways to make sure that there's room, both for kind of day-to-day emergencies, but then these sort of long-term risk factors, like, for example, appropriations.
In terms, I guess, of reserves, you're talking about who's putting in what reserves? We have none.
Just in terms of structuring of financing, right? As part of a bond issuance.
And can you remind me, is New York... Is New York State or City backing?
So, they have the right to cure.
What contractual protections will be put in place to prevent a creditor from gaining any interest in NICA developments in the event of a default on trust debt?
So, for... Caveat, like we've been saying, we're going through the process right now. And so, the exact specifics of this will be worked out as we go through alongside HD C, our financing partner. But just a few things to mention. So, for example, in the legislation, it outlines that the use of the facility as low-income housing with the rights and protections codified have to remain in any event. And so, that would have to be codified as part of the agreement, you know, whether that is the financing agreement itself. I'm not sure exactly which document per se, but that would have to be part of the arrangement pursuant to the law.
Got it. Thank you. In terms of tenant communication, during the voting process, what's been NICA's process for presenting the information in a fair and unbiased manner to tenants?
Sure. So, first, all of our meetings are covered in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Russian. So, we're doing them in the covered languages. So, we want to make sure that, you know, all residents, you know, clearly understand the choices that are offered. We present, we give, you know, equal time to the three options that are presented. We present them, you know, and the benefits and also, you know, the concerns that people have had. And then, we save as much time as possible for questions. Our original presentation, you know, that we... Our introduction presentation is quite long because it is a lot of information. But we usually, you know, the meetings usually have presentation, have Q and A. We have now started to break them down, you know, so this way, people could just focus on the trust, people could just focus on PACT, people could just focus on Section 9 and as well. This Saturday, we'll be going out, holding meetings just in Spanish. We'll be holding meetings just in Russian as well. We're doing smaller meetings too, with people who have specific concerns. You know, some people have concerns with relocation. Some people have concerns with what does it mean to be a Section 8 tenant? And so, we're, you know, as we have these meetings, as we have more information, we're having, you know, people have niche concerns. And we want to, you know, we want to make sure that we focus on those issues as well.
In terms of thank you, and I've seen some of the materials, and you're clearly making a huge effort to improve engagement. So, thank you for that. I share Councilmember Sanchez's concern about it's more than we've seen, probably not enough, but how are we going to replicate that standard?
No, I clearly, you know, getting turnout, as anybody knows who has to do that, is a very hard thing to do, get people to come out to a two-, three-hour meeting. But we are seeing people come out. You know, Vlada was just out, as she said, there was standing room only there, you know, to listen to her introduction, you know, to a meeting. We've had other meetings where we wish the turnout was better. But this is where those individual conversations that we're having with people either at their door or, you know, over the phone are so important. Because sometimes, you know, people like, "I go to a meeting and I don't want to get up there and ask a question." You know, maybe I'm not as assertive as everybody else, but, you know, I don't want everybody to know my business or anything like that. And so, when you go to somebody's doorstep and they tell you, you know, "You know, people have told me, like, I've lived here for 32 years. The only thing I own in my life is everything in my apartment. You're telling me that you're going to be able to, you know, pack this up and put it in storage, or you're going to put it in another apartment and I'm not going to have to worry about it?" That's a concern I really want to know about because I want to make that person feel really confident that, you know, they can do this and they can believe in the program. But that's not something you'll hear in a meeting necessarily, but you'll hear that, you know, when you talk to somebody one-on-one. And so, we're not relying on one way to reach people. We're relying on, you know, all the traditional ways a campaign would do it.
No, that's great. And we have a highly technical term for that. It's called meeting people where they are. So, thank you. Thank you for that. We've heard tenants say, "We shouldn't have to sacrifice our Section 9 lease to get repairs that we deserve." How does NICA address these concerns during this voting process?
You know...
The chair wants to respond.
Yes, yes.
Everybody wants to respond.
Sorry, we need more mics up here. So, maybe I can start and then I'll pass Lisa. So, I mean, I think at the end of the day, the goal remains, and I think others on the panel have said it, to map over the rights and protections and also get the repairs. That's the goal at the end of the day.
Just remind me, the Section 8 voucher has exactly the same protections as a Section 9? I know the legislation has something different too. So, this is part of the confusion of residents when we say, "You have the same rights, but all those documents say different things."
Right. So, and to the extent that Jonathan wants to talk about the PACT program also, we can get into that. But of course, Section 8 has several different types. There's the tenant-based Section 8, which, you know, is different from what we're talking about here. We're talking about project-based Section 8. But even just normal project-based Section 8 is different than the project-based Section 8 that comes with a conversion from Section 9 with the RAD program. There's all sorts of rights and protections that map over from the public housing program into the project-based voucher, same sort of thing with the trust. And so, the trust legislation that you mentioned does cover the fact that the rights and protections map over and calls out several specific ones as well as part of the legislation.
Does all of the rights map over?
So, that the legislation, the trust legislation carries them all over. I mean, the nuances that, you know, for example, the administration of the program and certain elements of the Section 8 program, you could qualify as different because they are being run by our leased housing department, for example. Some of the forms look different. But in terms of things like rent and the grievance process and the succession rights and all of those sorts of things, yes.
So, I definitely hear what residents say about why, you know, in order to get the repairs, I need to... Do we have to, you know, go through a different program? I think our goal here is to make sure that we preserve this housing stock, right? And we have to use all the tools that are available, you know, to us, you know. And it is, you know, in a lot of ways, it is a shame that the program that was created in the 1930s was not properly funded, you know, throughout the years and the federal government walked away from it. This is not a New York problem. This is a nationwide problem. If we were the, you know, if we were in Philadelphia right now, if we were in Chicago right now, if we were in San Francisco right now or Baltimore, we'd be having the same conversation. I do not know of a housing authority anywhere in the country that is able to run, you know, housing just using federal funds alone, you know. And so, we have to use, you know, whatever program is available. Right now, the program that the federal government offers is RAD and PACT. We've heard many residents have concerns about that. And so, we created an alternative, a local alternative, you know, called the trust that keeps out the private entity. It took us two years to come up with the legislation. We heard many folks, you know, say that they wanted to make sure that 964, you know, was included, you know, in the trust. We copied and pasted 964 and we put it in the trust. They wanted to make sure the bias protections were, you know, in the trust. We took bias and we put it into the trust. They wanted to make sure the succession rights were there. We made the succession rights even stronger than the public housing succession rights. Residents won't pay more than 30% and also, rightsizing is not required, you know, under the trust. We heard a lot of people, in some ways, they often joked that we were not very good negotiators because we didn't make it, you know, "If you support the trust, then you get this." It was, "If these were good for tenants' rights, we would put this in the legislation." We did.
Thank you. And was there anything that needed to be left out from the trust regs?
I don't, I can't think of it. But if there are issues that are brought to us and they would, you know, further tenants' rights, I'd be happy to have conversations with people and I'd be happy also to go to Albany and, you know, to amend the legislation.
Really? No, that's helpful. It sounds like, obviously, in these conversations, you're triaging what people are saying are the most important. Nevertheless, we're saying they're the same, but they're not the same because maybe some less important pieces were left behind, right? So, it's just this constant circular argument. They're all the same, but they're not the same. This is what we're trying to get at, just final clarity. What is covered? What is not covered? And that's what it is.
Yeah, I think for the... Largely for the things that people care about most, I think, you know, they're in there. The 964, the succession rights, the fact that, you know, tenants pay less than, you know, 30% of their income, you know, towards rent, rightsizing, all those are within the legislation, all of those are protections that tenants continue to receive and also due process as well.
Got it. So, another way to do this, and apologies for this, can you provide to the council the pieces that were not transferred over? We'll work it backwards in terms of the tenant protections from 964. Anything that was not transferred over?
I mean, we can certainly follow up if there's anything in particular. But I think to Brian's point, the transfer over, there's a generic statement that transfers over the rights of the Section 9 program. And then, underneath that, it just enumerates certain ones as examples.
Okay. So, Brian said not everything was transferred over. The most prioritized things were?
Were enumerated in the legislation as examples.
All right. We're in a weird circular problem right now.
I'm sorry if we're not being clear, but...
Were 100% of the 964 regulations transferred over into the trust resident protections? 100%?
It says not full. I'm forgetting, I could pull up the exact quote.
Okay. Y'all just said different things. I want you to know. I know I'm not a little crazy. I didn't have lunch, but 100% were transferred over. Yes or no? Yes.
On 964, correct.
Okay. We got there.
Great.
We got there. Y'all said different things. In terms of, how is NICA ensuring that technical language, for example, around the bond financing during pre-vote presentation is made accessible?
So, this is something that, you know, we take very seriously. Of course, we want to make sure that we are communicating as much information as clearly as possible. We do have materials that are included in the presentation. And then, oftentimes, you know, there will be discussion or questions. And so, we'll provide more specific answers based on those questions.
So, we're working on it.
As we've said before, you know, we know...
It's complicated. I mean, I think this is important work. And just for a plug, Center for Urban Pedagogy does amazing work at breaking down very complicated issues. And there it is. See, this is why we pay Vlada the big bucks.
Absolutely.
She has the props. What's the grievance processes in place? Should residents have questions on any aspect of the voting process?
So, for... We have a third-party independent election administrator who is conducting and overseeing the vote. And folks can submit to that administrator. I believe it's through 72 hours after the vote.
So, if a resident right now, let's say at Nostrand, is not engaged and concerned or just sees some, what, not above-board presentation and they have an objection or concern, they want to register. And while Ms. McFadden is amazing, they may not want to go to Ms. McFadden. Where do they go with their grievance or concern?
So, of course, they could send it to us and we can direct it to the third-party administrator or directly to the third-party administrator.
So, when you say they send it to us, what do you mean exactly for the record? Do you mean they call the CCC and register it? Where do they go?
Yeah, so there are several options. I mean, of course, we want to make it as seamless and easy as possible. So, we have the in-person office. We also have a specific email address set up for the voting process. But if someone does end up calling the CCC or coming through another place at NICA, that then gets redirected back to the team.
So, email where? Where do they send an email to?
I don't have the exact email address off the top of my head. We can certainly follow up with that exact address. It's like voting@NICA or something like that. But I'll get you the exact address.
Voting, a telephone number. I've heard many residents won't do in-person complaints for fear of retribution and not great relationship with employees, so we want as many options as possible. So, after the conversion to the trust, what is the plan for tenant outreach for vendor selection and needs analysis? And maybe it's too soon to tell. Will it be similar to RAD and PACT? Are you...
Under the legislation, we are required to work with the residents. And my track record, I think, should show you that I'm looking forward to working with the residents. I would like to reserve time to... I would like to reserve time to really come up with a thoughtful answer for future council testimony.
Yeah, and I think so along the lines of what Councilmember Brewer is, there is, there's a lot of experience with a wide, a range of programs and delivery models. So I think where we can extract the lessons learned and not replicate them, that would be the best. Will tenant outreach be taken over by a new team? Will, will it just be managed from within the trust? Or how, how does that happen?
Well, so I had mentioned a small core team. We are looking a property and for, toward a property engagement role that both does resident engagement and property engagement. So that is a component of the team where, you know, we want to make sure that the trust is represented. But it is, this is a partnership with NCHA. We are incubated, we are, you know, seamlessly transitioning from vote to the trust and will continue to work with NCHA on the various work streams that I had mentioned before.
Got it, thank you. So in, moving over to RAD PAC, I don't, I want you to be engaged. You, you noted the conversions have provided $4 billion in relief to NCHA. Do you know, is that, is that above or on par with expected, with the expectations of what the program would provide?
Do you mean, does it correlate with the PNA before we started the project?
Well, does it correlate to what was, what were the initial projections, right? I've, I've seen over the years when, a number of projections around the amount of relief that RAD PAC would actually provide in relationship to the needs. So I'm wondering, is it, is it providing the amount of relief on track with your projections? Is it underperforming, overperforming?
It's hard to compare the final project costs with early projections. I think what we really need to focus on is what is the end result? What is the product that residents are getting? And that gets shaped in the pre-development process. So we select a development team, they spend about a year going through and investigating the buildings, really understanding what that scope of work is and developing that for us. That is reviewed by us and the design and construction team that I mentioned. It's reviewed by HUD and it's signed off. And it's meant to meet all of the physical needs that are identified in that whole process. I know there was a hearing a couple of weeks ago about the PNA and, you know, the, the PNA is a sample, right? Of buildings, a sample of apartments within those buildings. And it is meant to reflect NCHA's cost and a, and a certain approach to handling those, those renovations. What we have found from project to project at this point, I know, you know, 37,000 apartments in a program, that's a little big number, but relative to our portfolio, we still have a long way to go. It's a fairly, still somewhat small sample size. And my point is, we have a lot of different building types, a lot of campus typologies, buildings of various ages, different construction methods. And so the point is, we have some projects that have come in under the PNA and we've had some projects come in over the PNA. And, and it is, so it is hard to really compare and say, are you measuring, are we achieving the PNA? The point is, are we delivering on the 20-year needs? That's what we have to solve for.
Right, no, I, I appreciate that. And I know there's obviously a complex analysis here. Nevertheless, we're pursuing a program for a purpose, right? And, and there are investments that we're making in that program. And so we want to, you know, ensure that, that that is being looked at as critically as possible. So I appreciate that. In terms of, the, in terms of the funding goals set forth in, in, oh, are the funding goals set forth in the PAC program realistic due to the high-interest loans that are impacting the real estate industry? How, how are you engaging with that?
What do you mean by the funding?
The high-interest loans? Like, how is that impacting your projections for how you'll be able to move these bundles forward?
So.
Are they eating into what you're expecting to be able to deliver on?
Sure, I mean, yes. You know, when we started PAC, we were in a different environment when interest rates were close to zero and certainly with the pandemic, went even further and closer to zero. And so that allowed us to do certain things. And now that interest rates have been going back up, it has certainly been a challenge. But we're committed to delivering again on the, the 20-year need. We want to make sure that these buildings are rehabbed and put on a solid footing for, you know, the next 100 years, in fact. So the way we structure these deals, Andrew mentioned earlier, having capital reserves and the like with the trust, that's the same for PAC. We want to make sure that this is, you know, not a one-time investment, but is hopefully is going to be the one-time major overhaul. And then you have regular program of maintenance going on every 15 to 20 years, right? And so that is what we're, we're working towards. And so it's made the task certainly more challenging in a high interest or higher interest rate environment, but so far, it has not stopped us from getting projects done.
Got it. In terms of, do you keep track of the staffing levels at developments pre and post-conversion?
We do, although it is really an apples-to-oranges comparison because the actual numbers are pretty comparable. And that may indicate, you know, depending on your perspective, that's good or bad. But the reality is, is the way NCHA organizes its work and the work rules associated with NCHA is very different than what the PAC partners have. So it's not easy to say, well, there's a number here and compared to NCHA and that's good or bad. It has to be, what are the employees doing at the sites?
Have you, have you disaggregated that in where it makes sense? Like, in particular, groundskeepers, right? Like, all the operational people that it takes to maintain the properties? Do you see any differences with, with maybe certain different jobs?
We have certainly looked at absolute numbers and we've looked at general job categories and we can share that information.
But generally, you see there, I mean, you said they're apples-to-oranges, but they're also kind of comparable.
The absolute numbers are generally comparable, but the type of work that's happening is different.
Got it, okay. Yeah, we'd be happy to see the disaggregated numbers. What's the expectation around how many more developments will be converted into the PAC program? You mentioned the number. We said there was 18,000 over the next two years, three years, right, to 25?
Yes, to 2025.
Can you tell me what the number is for the next year? How many you're expecting to convert in the next fiscal year?
So our fiscal year, which is the calendar year, so 2024 would be about 10,000 that we're aiming to close.
Got it. In terms of, and we talked a little bit about this throughout the hearing, but just to have it all in, in one place, what are the metrics that you use to evaluate the PAC developments? You mentioned, you know, the monthly reporting, but what are the metrics that you're looking at?
Well, the monthly reports are huge and we're going to continue to build out the analytics around that. So we have a first iteration of this, which again, we're going to have an online dashboard. You'll all be able to critique that. And I know with the legislation that you've introduced, there's going to be some other things that we'll include. But even beyond that, we're certainly happy to continue to look at different ways of measuring success. Something else that we've introduced recently is resident surveys, which I think is critically important. So for any project where construction has been complete for one year, we are now conducting surveys. I will not get into the details yet because we want to have sessions with the TA leadership at each of these developments to talk about the results. But I can say, as a general matter, people are satisfied with both the end result, but also just ongoing maintenance and operations. And again, we're going to have meetings with the residents at each of these developments and go over the results with them, and then we can share that out.
So, but what are some of the metrics that you look at when your team is, is looking at these monthly reports? What, what are they looking for specifically? Like, the high level, like, not obviously the, the details of it, but.
I mean, it's really work orders and specifically focused on the pillar areas that we've discussed before. And legal proceedings. Those are the biggest things that we look at to make sure that residents are being served.
So the pillar areas, legal proceedings, and what was the other one? I think I missed one.
Those are the two major ones.
Oh, those are the two main areas.
We also track financial performance and other things, and of course, we take that seriously. But what we look at as it relates to resident experience is the work orders, the resolution to those work orders and the legal proceedings.
Okay, that's what I missed. I, I'm having trouble hearing, so work orders was what you said. I, I thought I heard you say it, but losing my mind. Thank you for that. And in terms of, in terms of the surveys, how many, how many PAC developments have you surveyed to date? I'm delighted to hear that you're engaging resident feedback on that. How many have you been able to complete?
There are about five projects that we have, that we're in some stage of the survey process right now and we can report back.
And are you, are you doing them in all the converted?
Oh, yes, we're committed, this is going to be a permanent feature of the program. So as other developments reach completion and then that is that year of stabilization, we will then do the surveys.
Got it. In terms of, has, has NCHA conducted an analysis on evictions that have taken place at PAC sites after conversion?
Yes, in fact, you know, we track this again because I, as I mentioned, we, we track legal proceedings. So we have real-time data on a month-to-month basis. There have been 109 evictions since the program began in 2016 with Ocean Bay. I know this has been covered a lot. The bulk of those evictions happened at Ocean Bay for reasons that have been previously discussed. Those cases have been reviewed and found to be perfectly legitimate. So it's relatively light. And I will say, the other thing that we rolled out in 2020 is a set of housing retention guidelines. And it is our expectation, and in fact, a requirement, that the PAC partners follow these guidelines. And so what am I talking about? It basically means provide a level of deep customer service. So it's not enough to simply see a resident not pay rent and then start a proceeding or to have some other holdover type issue and then start a proceeding. We want them to go in, understand and talk to the residents and, and, and they need to demonstrate to us that they've made multiple attempts to talk to residents to understand what is the problem. So if you're not paying your rent, did you lose your job? Have your hours been reduced? Then point them into a direction of the resources, whether that's a recertification with NCHA or other resources that could help them get back on track. So we don't, you know, it, it is a long process. We watch the whole evolution from pre eviction outreach and the engagement that they're doing with residents to understand those issues. And we need to make sure that they have followed all of those steps and that they've adequately engaged our residents.
Got it. Do residents have, do residents have access to see what these agreements look like or the expectation?
The guidelines, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We could certainly release it, there's no reason not to.
Just curious. What's the most common reason that a private management company has started eviction proceedings?
I mean, I think it's pretty evenly, I think, between non-payment and holdover type issues.
Oh, got it, okay. So we understand that RAD PAC is not covered by the HUD agreement and in the absence of the agreement's protections, how are tenants in RAD PAC guaranteed the necessary work under the pillars? So you're tracking it, not required under the HUD, is that correct?
Well, we're, we're not subject to the HUD agreement, but that doesn't mean that we're not subject to other HUD rules. So as I mentioned earlier, as part of a PAC project, we have to address the 20-year physical needs. So by default, you know, that, that covers the project. But also, as it relates to more specific types of issues like lead abatement and dealing with mold and other environmental hazards, we have harmonized our rules and procedures with the rest of NCHA. So again, that there's no difference between being in Section 9 or being in a PAC project.
Got it. Are the, I can't remember this. Are the agreements between NCHA and the developers in the program made public?
We have template documents on our website, so if people can see.
But not the actual agreements?
No, we have not.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't make those public?
I mean, generally, we want to be able to negotiate with the PAC partners and get the best, you know, terms, given the specifics of any given project. I mean, there is a template set of documents, but there is certainly variations based on conditions and other issues at each site. So we want to make sure that we're having, you know, good faith negotiations with our development team. So that's the main reason.
So is that, is a concern that we're talking about after the agreement is, is making it public? Is it a concern of copycat problems?
Like, to inform other negotiations, right?
Got it, okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Right.
What are the metrics available regarding timeframes for completion of work orders at RAD PAC developments?
We can share that with you. We have it in our monthly reports. And so we've set timelines for resolving all of these issues.
Do they mirror, do they mirror what the timeframes for repairs at, at regular developments would be? Do they mirror the same time expectation for, for regular traditional Section 9?
Generally, specifically as it relates to dealing with environmental hazards that I mentioned, we didn't want to have people in reality or be in perception to feel like they were disadvantaged if they're going through PAC, so those are the same. We can confirm as it relates to some of the other non-environmental hazards like elevator outages and the like.
Okay, but you keep track of those timeframes and have metrics around it? Great, we'd love to see them. For Section 9 residents, mold remediation is required to be completed within 18 months. Does that also look like the RAD PAC repair remediation timeframe?
We worked out an agreement with the special master and the plaintiffs in BIAS. So again, we can send you the specifics on, you know, simple repairs versus complex repairs and the different timelines associated with each.
So that's, you read the document and you discern it? Is that what the answer was?
We'll, we'll follow up, we can walk you through it. We'll send you the document, whatever form is most helpful.
Okay. Let's see, okay. Is the, in terms of the, the, the dashboard around capital projects, the, is the, the developers that are doing capital projects under RAD and PAC also part of that dashboard? Are residents able to?
It's a separate dashboard, yeah.
A separate dashboard? Residents are able to still track what is happening in the development in terms of capital repairs in the same way?
Sorry, I don't fully.
No, no, it's okay. I'm, I'm losing steam, so I probably make no sense at all. So apologies. Is the, is there a capital tracker for those developments on the RED PAC that allow residents to track capital repairs publicly?
No, not at this time.
Is there a consideration to do that?
Certainly something we can explore. I mean, one of the things that we will have on the dashboard is overall progress towards completion. But at this time, it wasn't designed with a specific breakout of every type of work that's being done.
So tell me more about this dashboard you've mentioned several times. What's going to be on it and what are the timeframes associated?
Well, it has admittedly taken a while because we want to make sure we get both the data right and we want to make sure that it is user-friendly and digestible and all of that. Hoping to have it before the end of the year. But, you know, the areas that we're focusing on, again, relate to work orders at each of the projects. And again, with a focus on the pillar areas and resolution to resolving those work orders. Legal actions, so evictions essentially from financial non-payment or holdover. It's also going to cover the overall progress, as I mentioned, not by stream of work. It'll say, you know, Williamsburg Houses, 50% at this month and then it'll obviously work its way to 100, so you can see generally where you are in the timeline. And it also will track Section 3 performance.
Got it. And, and when is the hope for rollout?
Hopefully the end of this year.
End of year, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So let's, let's, I guess, switch into, right? Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so in terms of intro 646, we were wondering, what are the distinctions between what the bill is asking for and what the dashboard will be rolling out?
I, I mean, I think I have to study the legislation a little more closely, but I think there, my first read on it was that a lot of what you are asking for is what we. a lot of what you are asking for is what we A, either intend to put on the dashboard, or B, have at our disposal. So this is a good effort towards transparency and we're supportive.
Great. So it sounds like you're very supportive and anticipating.
Yes.
In terms of, let's see, oh, so for some of the developments with persistent HPD violations post conversion, um, how are you performing the reviews there? Um, you're receiving monthly reports. Uh, yet we're hearing some of the developments are still having quite a large number of violations. How, what's happening there?
I think we're going to need to dig into that comment that was made earlier. Um, because, you know, look, I think violations can be filed at any point along the lifecycle of a project. It could be pre-development, during construction, and maybe even immediately after construction. Obviously, our expectation is that once you've done the full renovation and you're into regular operations, you should not be seeing a lot of these violations, right? Um, it's inevitable that even the best operators will have violations that happen. So I can't say that there will ever be no violations. But I would, again, I, that was the first that I had heard of that. And so I would want to look into it to understand which developments are getting violations and when are they getting those violations as it relates to where we are in the project lifecycle and then we can report back.
Got it. Yeah, I mean, I, I would imagine NICA will want to proactively pull HPD violations. As opposed to the reverse where, where folks are telling you they're happening. Um, and I, I believe there is some work that is supposed to be happening in regards to HPD violations and some reporting. Does that, that ring a bell? Recent legislation that we're waiting to hear implementation and update about?
There is, um, yes, there's state legislation that would require HPD to put code violations on their site. And it is something that we're working with that agency in order to do. You know, I think there's a, there's an IT issue on their side, but uh, but it is something that they're actively working to, you know, get into compliance with.
Great. And, and you mentioned earlier that so far we haven't had any REDPAC developers who have received any fines for poor management, fines or termination of contracts. So far, we've been good on that end. Okay, thank you. In terms of um, what does the outreach look like post conversion? Do you maintain, I know you put together these great teams pre? Or what happens post? Do those teams dissipate? What is the engagement? Who's in charge of the engagement?
Very much involved in engagement all the way through construction because, as has been discussed in various contexts during this hearing and other hearings, there's still a lot of anxiety and confusion and the like. So we recognize that we have to be there and have a presence throughout the construction period. Um, so that is what we are doing as a matter of course for all of our current projects. And I would expect we would continue that going forward. Um, you know, by the time we get to the end of construction, we generally would roll back. Um, that's not to say we go away. Um, you know, issues come up on projects that have been completed and we, of course, are going to respond, but it's a less intensive engagement.
Got it. Thank you. Um. Do RED and PAC developers have a right to alter NICA eviction qualifications as PAC developments are no longer section nine and are not covered under the HUD agreement?
Do they have the right to change the?
To alter NICA eviction qualifications?
No, and the lease that they use was actually created by us with all of the rules and the frameworks in that, um, and reviewed uh by legal aid. And so, you know, they can't cha, first of all, they can't, they can't change the lease and therefore they can't change the rules.
Got it. Thank you. Um, with private management taking the lead on rent and eviction notices, has NICA engaged with management companies on developing outreach plans to make sure residents are properly informed of the change?
That's the housing retention guidelines that I mentioned. So we proactively took that step in twenty twenty and it's been, I think, very successful. We get regular reporting on all of their activities and we make sure that they're doing the engagement.
Thank you. Um, and in terms of, uh, let's see. Let's, let's move over to Chelsea, um, to Fulton Elliott, uh, for a second. So in terms of, you mentioned, can you, can you walk us through one more time what the next steps that are going to happen uh around this conversion?
So immediate next steps fall into two categories. One would be the environmental review process.
Right.
Uh, so the notice of intent will be published in the middle of November. That sets us up for the beginning of the public scoping sessions that would be in January. Uh, and then we would expect a draft EIS, you know, once, you know, everyone has heard from the public and all that input has been incorporated, the draft EIS should be about April of twenty twenty-four with a final EIS being published towards the end of twenty twenty-four. Uh, which would then allow us to start the ULR process either early, or sorry, late twenty twenty-four or early twenty twenty-five. Uh, the other thing that is not part of a formal process, uh, you may have heard of the meanwhile plan. And so this is an effort to start to make improvements early on. So one of the, the areas that residents have prioritized would be security. So what the Essence and Related team is preparing, proposing to do is to provide onsite patrols of both Fulton and Elliott Chelsea. These would be unarmed folks who would have eyes on the street and residents would have an ability to, you know, flag issues or they would obviously, if they spot issues, they can work with NYPD and NICA to remedy any issues. Once we, you know, get the environmental clearances, that level of security will be enhanced. Uh, right now, they can't make any changes to the building. So they would uh improve the door locks, cameras, all of that sort of thing, and make those physical improvements to also enhance the security.
So who's, who's paying for this?
So project costs and Essence and Related would pay for that.
So, so Essence and Related are paying for all the, all the um needs currently in Chelsea Fulton right now?
First phase would be the security enhancement that I mentioned. So they will pay for that.
And is that, they already have a signed agreement?
It'll be an amendment to the license agreement that we have with them.
Okay. When was the license agreement signed?
It would have been when we designated them in twenty twenty-one and that allowed them to do the inspections onsite and engagement and other things that they were doing from twenty twenty-one to the present. Uh, it does not contemplate security and other changes. So we have to, we have to modify the license agreement to account for that.
Got it. And has HUD approved uh the disposition of the developments?
Not yet.
In terms of um relocation planning, can you talk to us a little bit about what that, i- if there has been an agreement? Um, has it been drafted and submitted? What does it look like?
So ninety-four percent of residents would stay in their existing apartment until their brand new apartment and brand new building are ready for occupancy. So they'd move once and they'd only have to do that when there's a new building. The other six percent are related to Chelsea Edition and Fulton eleven. So one building at each campus. Uh, those folks would have to be temporarily relocated because each of those buildings would have to be the first two on each campus to be demolished once people have been relocated and then rebuilt. There are a number of vacancies. We always hold vacancies when we're doing a PAC project. Um, so we have a number of vacancies at both sites and our plan is to put the vast majority of residents into vacant units at Fulton and Elliott Chelsea. To the extent that, um, you know, resident preference or because household composition doesn't match available unit size, um, they would be temporarily relocated to sites off campus, uh, but still within Chelsea so that they can maintain schools, doctors, et cetera.
Do you know how many people constitute the six percent?
Uh, it's about a hundred and twenty households.
And how many current, uh, how many units are currently vacant?
It's around eighty or so.
So why, why was the decision made to move forward with demolition of NICA buildings prior to the required ULR process?
Well, it's not a decision per se. Uh, what we did is we had responding to resident feedback. We had started a robust engagement process earliest year to talk about the options, the options being a rebuilding scenario, one with ULRP, one as of right, and also sticking with the original plan of rehabbing all of Fulton Elliott Chelsea, plus one infill building at Elliott Chelsea. And uh, so that ran us through the spring and early summer of this year. And uh, we conducted the survey and residents selected uh the new construction. So it is a proposal. Um, and we are moving forward based on that resident feedback.
And this is the um, you're referring to, oh, well, I know there were many meetings. Uh, you're, are you referring to the survey that was conducted?
The survey and the meetings all happened uh simultaneously.
Did you, um, I haven't seen the survey. I've heard a lot about this survey, but I have not seen it. Um, do you, do you, did you maintain metrics on how many people responded to the survey and where the responses were coming from?
Yes. CHPC worked as a survey administrator. Um, so we did not collect the actual surveys because we wanted it to be separate from us. And they calculate, they collected the surveys, which could be done on paper and also online, and then they tabulated the results.
Great. I'd love, I'd love to see the survey and, and the results that were collected. Um, were, were you, obviously without sharing personal information, were you able to disaggregate where they came from, from within the development? Like if they're evenly distributed or you see maybe more coming from one area than another? Like what kind of demographics were kept on the responses?
So we don't have it at that level. Um, but we have it, you know, across, we, we're treating this as one project. So we have across Fulton and Elliott Chelsea. We didn't break it down by apartment number or building number and the like.
Right, but they are three, it's three developments, right?
Technically four, but.
Technically four, potentially with four different identities, right? People very particular about their homes. It, it'd be curious to see like what the representation is across those. In terms of when, when Chelsea, Elliott, Fulton is rebuilt, what's, what would be the breakdown of section eight, section nine, and market rate apartments?
So all two thousand fifty-six NICA apartments would be rebuilt. We are proposing to add roughly an additional thousand affordable, not replacement, but affordable.
What does affordable mean? Because in New York City, that could mean unaffordable.
Right. The exact income bands are still being worked out. Um, but we anticipate being MIH compliant and then twenty-five hundred market rate.
So the one thousand is meant to be the MIH compliant twenty percent. And then thirty, thirty-five hundred market rate?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, pardon. And the twenty fifty-six will be one hundred, will be shifted from section nine to section eight?
Yes. And again, as I mentioned earlier in this session, this is entirely a PAC project. Again, new for New York to use RED in this way, but not new in other parts of the country.
Well, we are not wanting to follow other parts of the country, that's for sure. Um, how does, how does adding market rate apartments to the, to the developments side help NICA achieve this mission?
I mean, the main piece here is that it helps finance the rebuilding of NICA apartments. And they're going to get fully uh modern apartments with all of the requirements that we would expect uh today. So, you know, things that a lot of folks might take for granted uh will be built into these buildings. So you're going to get, you know, ADA, complete ADA accessibility, sustainable buildings, uh, other building amenities like a doorman and a mailroom and all these things that you could not get in, um, you know, a standard rehabilitation of our projects. The other thing that we've heard from residents, and I think there's some here today who are going to be speaking, is that they, they wanted to be integrated. They, they did not want to stand out, um, as they feel they have been in the last number of years as the whole area around Chelsea has, has developed. So they want to be better integrated into the community.
So I don't know how many buildings there are, but essentially the section eight, the affordable and the market rate units are all going to be dispersed within one, let's say for intensive purpose, it was one building. It'll be mixed in.
The original thought that we had was to do exactly that. So you'd have a number of buildings, new buildings across both Fulton Elliott Chelsea. You'd have market rate, affordable, and NICA all interspersed. Um, but to do that logistically would take too long. And what we heard from residents is that they want, they need, want and need relief quickly. So they wanted to have purpose-built NICA replacement out of the gate. So that's the commitment. To build the first two thousand fifty-six apartments first before anything else happens. What we are trying to do is make sure that those NICA buildings are dispersed throughout the site. So each building
Got it, got it.
will be entirely NICA, but you will not have like a corner that's NICA and then everything else. We're trying to mix it and match. Uh, and, and again, in response to resident feedback.
Got it. Okay, I understand better. Um, and I mean, is, is the mixed income development the, I mean, NICA is currently mixed income, so it's not distinct in that way. But is this like what NICA is moving towards for the future, this kind of?
I think it is certainly a possibility, right? Um, I can tell you that since the news of Fulton Elliott Chelsea has come out, we've had residents at other developments ask us to start talking about a similar concept.
Um, why did NICA decide to revisit a voting process that had already occurred in twenty nineteen?
Well, there wasn't, uh, there wasn't a voting process in twenty nineteen. Uh, we started a working group in twenty nineteen, which ran till twenty twenty-one. Uh, and that, at the end of that process, uh, the general consensus was a rehab of the two thousand fifty-six apartments and one infill building at Elliott Chelsea. It was going to be, well, there were a number of sites identified, I should clarify, for potential infill. Um, the project that was selected had one infill project at Elliott Chelsea with a hundred and twenty units, fifty percent market, fifty percent affordable. As we, so that was at the end of twenty twenty-one. Um, as we went into twenty twenty-two, Essence and Related were starting to do their investigations, there were two things happening. One was consistent with what you've seen with our escalating PNA and related to some of the comments I was making earlier to, in response to one of your questions, the deterioration was far worse than anticipated. Uh, so the costs were starting to escalate. At the same time, residents, some residents were starting to ask about this new building at Elliott Chelsea and asking when they could move into that building. And that was not meant to be replacement housing. Um, and so the question kept coming and that's when we decided, well, if resident leaders at Fulton and Elliott Chelsea want to explore this, we can explore it. And that's what then led to what we did earlier this year with the engagement process.
So there wasn't, so you're saying there actually wasn't really a voting, I mean, didn't residents vote for the first iteration?
It was not a vote. It was a, there was a working group and residents were on the selection committee that ended up picking the Essence and Related team, but there was not a vote.
Um, and the, the survey, you're considering a vote?
No, it's, we, it's a survey.
So the survey is not considered in your eyes a binding vote. It is merely a temperature check.
I mean, it is binding enough that we're going to move forward and do, go through the public approvals process.
I mean, did the residents understand it as a binding vote? How was that portrayed? Because a survey is very different, right? A survey is like, give us your ideas, uh, which may change tomorrow.
The decision, the decision and the design on the survey, again, was done in partnership with resident leadership. And I know, again, some folks from Fulton are here today who were part of the decision-making and hopefully they'll get a chance to speak to this. But the path that we took was really based on the feedback that we got from residents.
Right, but the question is, did residents understand that this survey was being considered a binding vote?
I mean, we never phrased it as a binding vote, so.
And it's not being used as a binding vote?
No, but it is. No, but it is taking us down this road of this public approvals process that we're going to start, that I.
You, you see the challenge here, right?
I hear what you're saying, but there is a public process that's about to begin and there'll be lots of time for more engagement.
Based on a survey that is a temperature check, not that potentially residents, and I don't know this, so I don't, I've heard varying perspectives around this, but it sounds like there wasn't clear indication that NYCHA would use this survey as a binding vote document.
Again, we never called it, we never called it a binding vote, but we made clear that if they selected one of those three options that I talked about, that that would be the option that we would pursue. So that was said repeatedly.
And was there, was there a threshold of, of, I guess in the same way that the trust is creating a voting process, was there a threshold that was determined around this?
In terms of the number of people who'd have to select an option? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
More than 50%?
Okay. Wasn't it just happened?
No, it's more than 50%. And to be clear, what we had said was anyone who's over the age of 18 and on a lease was eligible to fill out a survey.
Is that the same, is that the same threshold that's being used for the trust?
Sorry, I turned that off. In terms of first past the post, right? So the option with most votes wins, yes. But the, the minimum participation threshold is 20%?
For the, for the trust, it is to be eligible to vote in that process. You have to be, is it head of household?
It's, it's anyone, yeah, so it's anyone who's on the lease or on the household composition, above the age of 18.
And is that the same criteria used for the others, for the survey?
Yes, it was anyone over 18 who was on the lease.
All right. I guess we'll, when we get the materials, we'll, let's see, how is, I guess, how is NYCHA going to provide for accommodations, particularly for vulnerable populations? I think one of the buildings may be a senior development, or I don't know, what percentage of this development is seniors and potentially disabled residents?
Well, Chelsea Edition is a seniors building. But what, I'm not clear on your question, can you repeat?
Yeah, yeah. In terms of particular accommodations for them?
So as part of our engagement, we had very specific and focused and intentional meetings with residents at both Fulton 11 and Chelsea Edition, the two buildings that would require temporary relocation. And so there's a whole set of engagement that we've been doing that's very much focused on their needs. Essence has brought on H O U, which is an organization that is focused on protecting tenant rights, and they have been doing in-depth anal, surveying of residents to understand their needs. So, you know, is there medical equipment or do they need special accommodation? So we are compiling all of that data so that we can understand how we can serve them and make sure the transition is as seamless as possible.
Got it. And doesn't NYCHA maintain data that way?
Yes, but I mean, I think we want the most current and real-time data, obviously with all of what's going on and the conversations around this project. We want to make sure we're hearing from people and their relevant concerns, again, in real time.
Right. I don't mean to be funny. I just, I've heard NYCHA say, we maintain, we know where the residents are who are medically fragile or need additional help, so. In terms of, how, how is NYCHA managing tenant concerns around relocation right now?
In what way? I mean, again, we are surveying to understand.
Are you still having meetings? We're here, I, I'm hearing a whole lot of, a lot of anger amongst, across residents, a lot of misinformation, you know, a lot of, a lot of feeling about it. So I, I'm interested in knowing beyond what Related is doing. Related is protecting their interests. I want to know who's protecting the residents' interests and how do we make sure that they are engaged and they are being supported? We, we don't have a good track record with, with demolition. We, we heard it from council member Millie, right? Those folks never returned home. And across the country, demolition has generally not allowed people to return home. We in New York City, when we've demolished any kind of low-income housing, generally people don't return. It's taken 20, 30 years. So I guess, given the height of emotion and concern, what is NYCHA currently doing to support residents in understanding and, and, and supporting dialogue? Because things are definitely getting heated.
Sure. So we've been engaged in very robust conversations and regular meetings with our residents since this pivot earlier this year happened. In the last month or two, we've been doing, we've continued that engagement, but a little less intensively than in the spring and the summer, so that we can actually develop the plans around the E I S. As I mentioned, H O U is doing their survey and their analysis. And, you know, as we get ready to start the E I S process, we're going to ramp back up the intensive engagement that we have done throughout this entire process. Because as you said, we want to make sure we get it right. We don't want anybody to get lost in the shuffle. We want to make sure that this is a benefit for residents of Fulton and Elliott Chelsea.
Is there a place for, I've heard for some, some residents who don't feel like they can use the usual mechanisms, right? That they feel estranged from the tenant leadership representation? Or they quite frankly, don't trust any of us? What are the places that they can go to put forward their grievances and their experiences around this process?
I mean, it's a good question. I mean, I think typically they've gone to electeds, they've gone to advocates, and that is typically how we've heard if they don't trust, you know, the resident leadership or they don't trust NYCHA. I think that's probably the best set of options that there are.
But then y'all tell us everything is great and it's robust engagement. So how are we, how are we collecting these and responding in real time?
Well, it is robust, and I do think there is a common thread, which I think you'll hear from, again, some of the resident leadership when they speak later today. I didn't say, and I would not want to represent, that we have 100% consensus. I think you're right, there's certainly some folks who are opposed and there's anxiety. And we want to make sure that we are responsive to those people.
Yep. Is there, is there a similar like ombudsman or is it the CCC people could call?
I mean, they can certainly call the CCC, for sure. They could all, CEO has reminded me that they can also call HUD.
They could, if somebody could get through. In terms of, I know, thank you for, for your patience and bearing with me, we are, we are approaching the end. Yeah. Yeah. I was going to go to, let's, let's, let's move over to vacant vacancies and some rent collection issues, the big, some of the big concerns. In May, NYCHA reported, right, being able to only to collect 63% of rent payments. And we know with arrears of over 500 million, where are we today with rent collection?
Our rent collection numbers are still about 62%, which is really impacting our operations, as you can imagine. So we're remaining consistent at this point.
Oh, boy. In terms of the 163 million that was set aside for E R A P, we know the 128 million was specifically for NYCHA. As of today, have you received any of that money?
Yes. We are very thankful to our state partners and OTDA. We've been working really collaboratively. And as of yesterday, we have received 67.9 million dollars from OTDA. What they've agreed to do, which we are very thankful for, is take the highest 12 months of rent arrears. So it is taking some time to go through each of the tenant files and make sure that it's properly credited.
I'm not sure I understand the method, the highest.
The, so most of our tenants have been in rent, most of our tenants who are in rent arrears have been in rent arrears since March of 2022. If you, excuse me, March of 2020, when the pandemic started. As you may recall, one of the benefits of being a public housing resident is if your rent or your income decreases, your rent decreases. What we are doing is applying funds from OTDA for the highest 12 months out of the three years of arrears.
Got it. And when is OTDA expected to fund the remaining amount?
We are continuing to work with them. We've identified they are going through the applications that they've identified as NYCHA residents. So it's a very time-consuming and, and laborious process, but they've been working very collaboratively with us and our team, and for that, I'm really thankful.
Yeah, I'm sure. Is there, I guess, as you're going through the process, will then residents be notified that they're?
Yes. So we will notify them, and then what our intention is, is to direct them to one-shot deals, to payment plans, because the money that they're receiving from OTDA is capped at 12 months. And as I just said, you know, we're, we're nearing the end of, of 2023. So the tenants who have applied for E R A P have been in rent arrears for close to three years. So they will need supportive services for the balance of their rent arrears. And we need to get them back into the cadence of paying rent.
Right. Thank you for that update. There's so much, so much anxiety on the ground around where our folks are with it. And I'm, I'm sad to see that we're still at 63%. I know this is a huge challenge. How many, how many evictions has NYCHA filed in this past year?
So as you know, NYCHA's goal is to keep people housed and resolve tenant arrears. We are really the landlord of last resort in New York, so we take that obligation very, very seriously. Since the end of the eviction moratorium in January 2022, we have executed 33 evictions, two in 2022 and 31 in 2023.
How many NYCHA apartments are currently vacant?
Going to turn it over to Eva Trimble.
Finally. Right now, NYCHA has approximately 4,900 vacant units available.
So obviously, given our hearing several months back on these vacancies, we're definitely left with this sense that NYCHA is warehousing these units for the purposes of fulfilling future plans. In addition to complying with the new lead remediation standards, how is NYCHA's vacant units being utilized moving forward?
Well, our, right now, we are, I wouldn't say warehousing, but we are holding vacant units in preparation for important relocations as part of our capital preservation programs. That includes both the COP mod, PAC RAD, and in the future for the trust. And we do that, number one, because the work that we're doing in these, in these properties involves environmental and comprehensive rehab, and it's not safe for the residents to stay in place. And number two, it's very important to us that our residents stay in their communities for a variety of reasons, schools, doctors, things like that. And so it's important to keep those apartments available for these programs in order to make sure those preservation capital projects work as smoothly as possible. Right now, other than that, our vacant units are used to, to both facilitate transfers from within NYCHA, emergency transfers and others, as well as for the 250,000 people waiting on the public housing waitlist right now.
Oh, yeah. And in terms of, I mean, will priority of vacant units be provided to unhoused domestic violence survivors and/or relocated pact residents? Like how do you prioritize among those populations?
Right now, we have a tenant selection program that is, that sets forth the priorities and the selection process for it, for vacant units. As they're, as, once a vacant unit is completed with the, with the turnover work, then we make the selection through the system of the next available prospective tenant.
So tell me more about the tenant selection program. Like how, how are they doing that prioritization?
We can certainly follow up with you separately. It's, it's a pretty nuanced process, the tenant selection program, but it does set forth different priorities for both transfers and new applicants. And issues like domestic violence, emergency transfers, you know, right now, we have about 2,800 people on our emergency transfer list, but 10,000 people on the transfer list overall. And these get prioritized with new applicants as well.
2,800 is part of the 10,000 or in addition to?
It's part of it.
Okay. Has the city provided any additional resources to address staffing concerns or contracts for outside vendors to complete tasks such as paint and plaster jobs for, for the vacancies?
So we're, we're very grateful to the city for the 65 million in expense and 8 million dollars in capital that they've provided for the vacant unit readiness program. That is absolutely a key resource that is helping us turn over units right now. Primarily, that funds vendor work. Items like plastering is a trade that's very hard to find in the market right now, so NYCHA supplements with our own staff for that kind of trade work.
And have you been able to see a quicker turnaround because of it? I know we were up to like 400 days of sitting on, not sitting on, where units were, were not yet ready.
That's about what we're still experiencing right now, only because we are still working through some of the older vacancies in our pipeline, so they are, they are well-aged. But we are seeing more production coming out of our program right now as we've, we've moved to really focus on this and improve some of the internal processes to make it work, to make it work better.
I would imagine when, when developers take over RAD pact developments, they're faced with this similar challenges of remediation. Why are they able to move things so quickly and it takes us so long?
Well, they're, I mean, I'll let Jonathan speak, but they're, they're doing comprehensive capital work. They're not doing repairs. So, you know, it's much, you know, when you're replacing an entire stack in, in an entire plumbing line, you're fixing future leaks, you're fixing future problems. Right now, when we're coming in and doing turnover, we're, we're doing minor repairs that, you know, represent the needs in our buildings right now. Obviously, those leaks come back until we're going to fix the underlying plumbing issues.
Got it. In terms of, this one here. Yeah, similarly for intro 648, is there a distinction between what the admin is doing right now, what NYCHA is doing right now, and what the bill is requiring?
Much of the information required in the bill is available through data that NYCHA already produces, so we're happy to work further with you on this, on this bill to see what we can do.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously, our big concern is 5,000 apartments with a 10,000 transfer list and 250,000 people waiting and over a year of getting those apartments online. It's, it's truly just untenable, so we've got to figure out how to support and move that forward. Let me, last questions. If we could move to resident-managed corporations very quickly, how does NYCHA, and I know we've talked about this before, but for the record, how does NYCHA provide support for residents interested in resident-managed corporations?
Sure. So any residents that request or express interest in a resident management corporation, we've referred them to HUD. It is a process that is outlined by HUD, and I think they have to submit a request and they have to prepare a. and go, they have to prepare a, uh, a plan for, uh, I'm thinking of the word, technical assistance plan, uh, with HUD in order to go through that process. I believe we've had a few requests that have come to us, but have never completed the HUD process.
And, um, does NITIA provide any training or support, uh, for that process?
HUD does, yeah.
Oh, HUD does, okay. Has there been, ha- have there been any RMCs completed?
Not in New York City, to my knowledge.
Okay.
And my understanding is only a few across the country.
Say that? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I, I think there's, I think, I don't believe there's been any in New York City, and I think there's only been a few in the country.
Got it, okay. I think, I think with that, we, I think with that, we are ready to turn it over to public testimony. I want to thank you for your patience, um, and responding to the council members' questions and, um, and the work that you do. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll now new, move to public testimony. For those wishing to testify, if you have not already done so, please see the sergeant in arms in the back of the room and fill out a testimony slip. Uh, even if you're registered onli- registered online, please still, still fill out a testimony slip with the sergeants in the back of the room. We will move to in-person testimony first and then to testimony on Zoom. If you are wishing to testify or on Zoom, after in-person testimony, we will, you will be prompted, uh, one by one, uh, with a prompt to unmute yourself on your computer. All those testifying today, either in person or virtually, are encouraged to submit testimony at council.nyc.gov backslash testimony, or via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov. I'll now call up the first panel of in-person, uh, in-person testimony. Hector Vasquez, Marnie Halasa, John Mudd, and Gloria Tull, if you can come up to the dais or to the table. You can start when ready, Mr. Vasquez.
Gotcha. Uh, good evening. My name is Hector Vasquez, and I'm here today to speak as a resident of NITIA Fulton Houses and former resident of Elliott Chelsea Houses for over 30 years. I'm also a disabled veteran, raising two children in deplorable conditions that we have been forced to endure for a long time. Mine is one of many families who are forced to live in conditions that pose serious risks to our well-being and that of our children. I am truly disappointed, um, in folks who are speaking out against this plan, uh, out of misinformation and no real knowledge of what's happening with the proposals. I've been a part of the working group for, uh, you know, since the beginning, and even following up with subcommittees and everything else. And I'm also a member of the Fulton Tennis Association and a former member of the Elliott Chelsea Tennis Association. So I've been heavily involved with this proposal since pretty much day one. And, um, it's been guaran- I guarantee you that it has been tenant-driven. We have had tenants involved with this program since day one, along with politicians and various leaders in the community, uh, CHPC, um, we had a, uh, Legal Aid Society was also there as well to advise, um, Community Board Four members. So we have peoples from specialties of all walks of life. But basically, we have, uh, folks who are also against this plan, and, uh, unfortunately, it's, uh, really fear-mongering that's been going on, um, making folks panic with misinformation about what's been, uh, what's being proposed. Uh, we've all gone above and beyond, uh, NITIA-related, in essence, uh, the tennis associations, along with, uh, a bunch of residents that are for the plan, that have, uh, put out, uh, pro- this proposal in plain English, Spanish, Russian, whatever language you needed, uh, it was presented. Uh, we did, uh, uh, there was phone calls being made, there was meetings, uh, tennis association meetings every month, on top of workshops, uh, door-to-door. Our doors would always open, our numbers were given out to, for contact, for any information, uh, that anybody needed. And, uh, still, uh, you know, we still have folks who just basically didn't show up at the meetings for whatever reason, um, and they're just going by hearsay. And, uh, it's unfortunate, no matter how many times you assure them in writing, uh, and it's all documented, and all, uh, there's been a lot of, uh, even the Community Board Four had meetings that are readily available and still, uh, you can view them on YouTube and on the CB4 website. So basically, everything was, uh, presented in a clear and concise way, um, in many languages. So, uh, we've been trying to be as accommodating as possible to make sure, uh, that moving forward, everybody's involved and understands what they're getting into. Um, as far as the, uh, I'll, I'll just send this up. Um, as far as the, uh, survey that was done, it was not blindly given. Uh, we went on a tour, and, uh, basically, it was broken up into buil- building blocks, so to accommodate everybody, um, on different days, and it was announced to everyone which days they would be going if they wanted to go. And if, uh, they couldn't, other accommodations would be made for them. And we took tours of related, uh, properties, uh, in Roosevelt Island and in Brooklyn, and, uh, we were very impressed with what they had to offer there. Then we were brought back to, uh, the community centers where a long presentation was made on the three proposals, uh, that included the redevelop, the remodeling of the, uh, buildings, which unfortunately is not in a budget anymore, because, uh, it ballooned from initially about, uh, 300 million to about 1.3 billion, uh, because of the changes in, uh, asbestos regulations and, uh, lead abatement regulations, um, the values have gone, uh, the values of failures have gone down in those. So unfortunately, a lot of the mi- the apartments that passed before, uh, did fail. So, and as you know, we, uh, no asbestos or leaded basement can be moved forward without, with tenants inside the apartments, uh, making it very cross, uh, cost prohibitive. So, basically, I just wanted to say, um, we are still living in very unsafe and disgusting conditions, which continue to get worse every day. Uh, the longer we delay this solid plan, the greater the risk. We loo- uh, we will lose our homes because they will become uninhabitable. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vasquez, and thank you for, uh, walking us through what you've experienced, um, in the development and the engagement. When you mentioned, um, you mentioned the survey, build-a-blocks, can you tell me a little bit more about how it was constructed and, and what do you mean by build-a-block?
Oh, um, um, ba- basically, what happened was, uh, when the tours, uh, were set up, uh, it was way in advance, people were notified when, uh, the dates would be, so they could, uh, schedule accordingly and let the people know that they're going. Um, and basically, it had to be broken up block by block, meaning 19th Street was, uh, the first to go, along with parts of 18th Street, because it was just too many people to accommodate in one shot. We would have had to have like 10 buses possibly, if anything.
I got, I got it, I got what you're saying now. Um, for the survey, right, so, um, I, it, what I was, what I was trying to get at, um, when I was, um, talking to NITIA staff, was a, a clear articulation around, um, how, what the survey instrument's purpose was. And, and, you know, a binding vote is very distinct from a survey we're trying to learn, like, what you're interested in and what you would like to see.
Right.
So, in your opinion, do you, having seen the survey and worked, done all this work, um, do you think it was clearly articulated that this was kind of a, a survey to get temperature versus a binding vote, this is your future?
Um, well, basically, at this point, we were ready to make a decision, so, uh, and most of the tenants were aware of this at the time. Um, as far as, uh, sema- uh, the semantics of being a vote or a survey, I mean, it's, uh, going back and forth. But honestly, the way I understood it and the way it was presented, it was, um, there was, uh, PowerPoint slides, uh, for each option, and it was, it was explained what it would entail, the length of time it would, uh, take, what accommodations would have to be made. So it wasn't just say, here, here's a survey, you know, pick and choose. It was clearly explained what each was, and it was nothing really new, other than the plan for new buildings. That was kind of new, and, um, you know, it was thought that basically there would be pushback on it, because it was something that wasn't understood in the beginning.
Right, wasn't discussed before.
But hence, that's why the meetings happened, and it was, um, attempted to clearly explain, um, what was gonna happen possibly. And again, it's a proposal.
Right.
It wasn't etched in stone, but, uh, basically, it was a choice that everybody was willing to make. And, uh, unfortunately, not everybody would show up at these meetings, as usual.
Sure, sure.
Um, so, it, uh, you know, the, hence, these poor, maybe the, um, the numbers were not as high as we would like, but unfortunately, it's the same at these TA meetings as well. We're lucky if we get, uh, you know, maybe 40, 50 people at these meetings, when me- meanwhile, we have thousands of people in these developments.
Good old democracy. Thank you so much, Mr. Vasquez.
I'm gonna call the next panel, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next panel will be Ray Serrano, Brigitte Gutierrez, Eddie Allen, and Lucy Newman. If you're still presenting, you can come up to the table. Yeah. I'll call in folks, Rosalind Conley, Joel Gross, Renee Keat, and Brigitte Charlton-Vincenti. Anyone remaining can come up to the table?
Hi, uh, my name is Lucy Newman, I'm a staffer at the Legal Aid Society. Lovely to see you, thanks for holding this hearing. Sorry.
Yes, you can come, you can come to the table, you can come to the table, you can come to the table as well, Mr. Keat, you can go ahead, Mr. Newman.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about pact conversions, and mainly, um, around the impact that they have on households. Um, obviously, we, um, do staff a helpline that, um, takes calls from people that are either facing a pact conversion or have gone through a pact conversion, and we help them with issues that they may be experiencing. Um, I think it's really important for people to understand that these are not just simply transactions, um, they are people's lives, and they do cause a lot of disruption into people's lives. Things have definitely got better over time compared to some of the, the earlier pact conversions, especially those big mega bundles that were done early on in the, in the program. But there's definitely some things that we would like to see, um, moving forward and, um, in terms of creating kind of a seamless transition for people. It is a very confusing transition to go from being public housing to Section 8. That in itself is a big change in the way in which someone's, uh, subsidy, their federal rental assistance subsidy is managed, and that's not to be taken lightly in terms of people's confusion, um, both before and after the conversion. Um, couple of things, um, we really do want the authority to focus on transfers prior to the conversion, to ensure that people who are on the waitlist currently with approved transfers, get those transfers done either inter or intra-development before the conversion. And obviously, that does have to fall within the backdrop of the tenant selection and assignment plan, so it's not that easy, but I think it's something that they can do as long as they focus on it early on in the, in the conversion process. Um, that also goes to then the issue of vacancies, because they are holding units vacant, so they should be prioritizing those to put those transfers into. One of the things we do hear a lot about is that prior to a conversion, when NITIA knows that they're, they're gonna offload the, the site, a lot of the maintenance issues go down. Um, so for example, people are not getting the repairs that they need, um, because there's definitely a sense that what's the point in making the repairs if we're not gonna have to be responsible for these units going forward? But, you know, some of these people are living in very, very dangerous conditions, and in addition to that, um, those conversion processes take a while, so they, they really are entitled under law to those, um, repairs. Um, couple of other things, um, the, we do really encourage NITIA to bring out a universal transfer policy between the Section 8 and the Trust and Section 9, uh, programs, so that people can continue accessing transfers throughout what will historically be NITIA's public housing developments. Um, and, um, we also really urge the authority to make copies for every individual of their te- tenancy file, their public housing tenancy file, because after the conversion, there are a lot of issues that arise, which people need that public housing tenancy file for, and it's very difficult for them to get it, either by foil, because it takes too long, or because it's prohibitively expensive to pay for copies. So we really urge them to do that. In terms of the PNA, do, I'm, I'm really hoping that you'll hold, um, a separate hearing on the Fulton-Elliott-Chelsea issue. I think there is some really, um, worrying things around how the PNA went from 366 million to allegedly 1.3 billion. We have asked to see copies of the new PNA, and I think many parties are waiting to get copies of that. Um, I also do think that there are many issues around that survey. For example, in the survey, there was no mention of demolition at all, when you look at the, the three questions that were posed to people. And we've had now many briefings on what it is that the proposal entails, and it is very, very hard to understand the moving and, and restacking of all the decks, and so I think it is something that, that, um, this committee should have a hearing on. Um, in terms of Intro 646 and 648, uh, we support them fully. Obviously, we believe in, in transparency, and the greater amount of transparency that residents have, the better it will be for all. We also do, um, would urge the committee to look into, um, also amending the city, uh, law that would entitle NITIA public housing residents to get HPD inspections and violations placed, which they don't currently have, which every other, um, renter in New York City does have access to, and which pact, um, residents do now have available on 311 and HPD. So that's really it for today, and we'll submit, uh, our written testimony to the, um, site given. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, good afternoon. Um, my name is Brigitte Charlton-Vincenti, and I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm here.
Sorry, just move a little closer to the mic so that we can get the record. Thank you so much.
If I'm here at the, the, um, right, uh, public hea- hearing for public housing, I am a vendor with NITIA, and I have a organization called Inner City Green Team, and we are, um, operating out of Wagner Houses. This is regarding recycling and, and waste and, and issues, so I don't know if I should be presenting?
You can certainly give the testimony. I believe there was a sanitation hearing next door that might have been on the bills, but you can give your testimony? It was closed, alright, so you can give your testimony, and you can certainly submit the written testimony to the testimony email, and the sanitation committee will get it. But you're more than welcome to testify.
Oh, I, I did that, too.
And for the record, the chair, I am very supportive of the work that you've done and would love to see it, um, grow, but we'd love to hear your testimony.
Oh, okay. That's wonderful, thank you. Good day, again. Thank you for hearing my testimony. My name is Brigitte Charlton-Vincenti, I'm a lifelong South Bronx NITIA resident and founder of Inner City Green Team Economic and Environmental Development. Inner City Green Team is a nonprofit environmental organization focused on poverty alleviation and community development. Our mission is to protect the environment and help transform the lives of residents living in New York City Housing Authority developments through right recycling, outreach, education, job training, and paid work that can lead to a lifetime of employment and civic engagement. When my, when first testifying before this committee was because, as a law-abi- as a law-abiding citizen, I thought I was doing the right thing by placing my recyclables in the appointed bins at my development in 2006. This is when I witnessed my recyclables being thrown away with the garbage. I was shocked to learn that all my efforts over the years were in vain because NITIA was not in compliance with the recycling laws of New York City. Afterwards, I began taking my recyclables to my children's school in Harlem. Being that, being that this effort was just a drop in the bucket, I knew something had to be done. I had a vision in 2011, after discovering that NITIA's recycling program was non-existent, and found the perfect opportunity, at least I thought, to help establish a recycling program in my development, when I came across a NITIA posting urging residents to get involved with Commissioner Lopez's green agenda. Consequently, I started a resident gr- green committee in my development with the confidence of fulfilling the commissioner's agenda to help green public housing. Towards that end, I held public meetings and events to raise awareness and educate NITIA residents about recycling and energy efficiency, conducted door-to-door surveys to ascertain residents' interest in learning and participating in a recycling program, organized a recycling rally to mobilize resi- residents around the issue, and created the door-to-door, floor-to-floor recycling pilot pro- project, which... which proposes a unique solution not only to help NITIA come into compliance with New York City's recycling law. For twelve years, I have led, I have led battles and trenches for me and my fellow residents' right to recycle. I wanted to do the right thing, all while working to prove my concept. But for eight years, but eight, but the first eight years were riddled with a host of setbacks from being threatened with eviction, Inner City Green Team filing a lawsuit with the NRDC to force NITIA to come into compliance, and battling with a slew of adversaries and not being fully funded or supported by city agencies. I envisioned at, I envisioned a NITIA door recycling collection service model which proposed a unique solution not only to help NITIA come into compliance with the recycling law, but build a model for residents to become educated about how and why to recycle and create sustainable green collar jobs to help address high unemployment rates amongst NITIA residents. Under this initiative, NITIA residents will be hired to go to each unit in the development to collect the recyclables residents set out. This white-glove service approach incorporates education, outreach, ease of use, accessibility, digitized data, and rewards to influence behavior change. In two thousand and seventeen, in international competition, the NYCX CoLab Challenge sought solutions to improve recycling capturing rates, capture rates at NITIA developments. Increase resident engagement, mitigate litter, reduce the amount of time that NITIA employees spend dealing with waste, and involve the community in a meaningful way. I applied and won the twenty thousand to implement my program at the Brownsville Houses, and in just four months, the recycling rates tripled. More than seven tons of recyclables were diverted from the waste stream during the pilot. Lessons learned from the pilot demonstrated that this community-based recycling program can yield impressive results within a short period of time. An additional ten tons was also diverted at the end of the pilot period. It was a struggle to keep the program running when being flouted by then-NITIA interim chair and DS, and DSMY Commissioner Kathy Garcia, who functioned as our nemesis and used her authority to intercept our progress. Through fundraising and using my personal savings, I was able to run the program for another year until COVID shut us all down. In late two thousand and twenty, I had the opportunity to present my solution to former NITIA Chair Gregory Russ, and he expressed interest and wanted to know more about the work. With enduring support from Vlada Kenneth, the then VP of Sustainability, Inner City Green Team was awarded an RFP to implement the program at the Wagner Houses the following year. Since my first testimony to this council in two thousand and thirteen, my organization has made strides to increase residential recycling at NITIA developments in Brownsville and East Harlem. At the Wagner Houses alone, we have diverted over a hundred thousand pounds of materials from landfill. As a resident-led organization, a Section Three vendor, my organization has officially been in contract with NITIA since June two thousand and twenty-two. The staff consists of five NITIA residents and three targeted Section Three team members who collect NITIA recycling and conduct outreach and education services on a weekly basis. Although we have now had the dedicated support of my fellow residents and sincere commitments from the Office of Sustainability, it's not enough. The past year has been daunting to operate effectively on the Wagner campus. The recently dismissed property manager made reckless and hellish efforts to stop our operation. After she was prohibited by the legal department from shutting down our Earth Day event in two thousand and twenty-two, she was on a vengeance-filled warpath, fabricating slanderous statements about operations on campus and changing the locks of the rooms where she initially permitted us to utilize. And meeting after meeting, she could not justify the reason for her actions. Wagner Houses is a twenty-six-acre campus with dozens of underutilized rooms, which many have sat dormant for decades. We originally operated in the three rooms for admin use, store equipment, engage the residents, and sorting the materials. Being housed on campus is imperative, and residents witnessing us in action has been an effective way to convert residents' thoughts and behaviors.
Ms.? Are you, are you, are you near the end?
I'm going to close it out.
And please feel free to submit your full testimony.
So I'll ask, it's, it's been a lot, but I'll ask, um, so we'll, we'll talk about the expansion plans, and then I'll just close it out. It'll be about another minute. Is that okay?
Public testimony, a quick question.
Okay, no. Okay, you want me to?
How about I close out right now, and we can continue talking afterwards?
We ask, dear members of the council, I implore you to do what is necessary to help stop, um, this prime example of what a contradiction looks like. I plead with the council to hold NITIA managers and departments more accountable and comply with all NYC waste management laws and rules, allow adequate space of developments wherever space is not being utilized to fulfill Inner City Green Team's contractual obligations, and work with intention to provide our residents with all the services they need and deserve, make stipulations for us to be fully supported at every NITIA development, and help Mayor Adams hold up his candidacy pledge to fully, fully fund NITIA recycling at NITIA and repurpose under unutilized funds earmarked for NITIA capital projects for Inner City Green Team operations. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you so much. Oh, I just want a quick question because I, um, for, for Lucy, before we jump to you, Ms. Keep. Could you, Ms. Newman, can you tell us, you mentioned about providing tenancy files. Could, could you explain that a little bit more about what you're seeing on the ground and how we could rectify?
Yeah, sure. So every household in public housing has what's known as a tenancy file, which contains copies of the leases that have been signed over the years, recertifications, also interview notes from any interaction with management, copies of requests that may have been made to add family members, pets, things like that. And so sometimes after conversion, people will be making a claim to be a remaining family member and seeking succession to a lease. And they may want to be able to show that there was, that the housing authority knew of their existence prior to the conversion or that their family had made attempts to add them to a lease. They may have pet records in there that they need to be able to show the new landlord. And what we, what we see is that once the building converts, those public housing files are literally just boxed up and shipped to probably Long Island City, which I think where they keep a lot of those records. And then when a resident or if a resident then needs to be able to show proof of those things just by way of in the management office or in an eviction proceeding, it becomes very tricky for them to then get that information. And so it strikes us that it's something that could be done by the property managers over the course of getting ready for a conversion and get someone in to scan them and, and create digital files or paper copies if that's what's more useful to a household. But it would be very helpful to not only the residents, but also to the new management to be able to just have that on hand.
Thank you. That's, that's very helpful, and it definitely sounds like one of those things that should be part of a process of preparation to support residents. Thank you. Thank you for that, and thank you for the other suggestions and things we should be looking into. Have you, have you requested a copy of the PNA for Chelsea Fulton?
Yeah, I think a number of people have requested it. Community Board forwarded. I know that some other people have. So I, I think they said it's in progress or that they're, they're going to get it. But I would need to check to see what the status of that is.
Great. I, more, more to come. Thank you so much for your patience and being here. Ms. Keep, thank you. Renee, thank you so much.
Hello. Thank you for having me back. Let's see. We can concede to say the residents have been engaged. Define residents. Mostly, you're talking about tenant association presidents and their allies. If you only speak with them, you're missing thousands of other people that actually live there as well. The lack of transparency is alarming. It has not been tenant-driven. It has not. The way we find out things is coming to hearings. We come here, we find out things. We go to the community board, basically full board. The two we actually are always at is now Housing, Health, and Human Services and Chelsea Land Use. That's how we find out everything. We find out the plans. We find out the size of the apartments. We find out that we're the ones who are going to be stacked up, and then they're going to have the smaller apartments, the other, mixed income. Thank you for saying that we are mixed income. So few people actually recognize that. I'm tired of it. Jonathan Guevire, he has a hard time answering a question. Not surprising. Last week, he was standing in a corner in the dark, making sure he couldn't answer or wouldn't answer questions, and gave it over to Justin Lamorella. I agree when Lisa Hoverbiet says, "When PAC came, it has totally changed our lives." It has changed mine. I am now fighting not to have my home demolished, not to have colonial language used that we must be like everyone else. We are ourselves. We were here before so many of the other buildings that stick out like an eyesore. We do not need to conform to others. We need to be who and what we are. We are public housing residents. We are the ones who do a great deal of work in this city. And one more thing. It takes some, a lot more than someone who looks like me. Someone who is of my color is the person who is the front person for related. And also, let's look at the leadership of the New York City Housing Authority. They're all women. It's a meaningless thing. They have chosen to continue the bad practices. Never have I seen them run around so hard to get that ERAT money. I'm like, they could have done that, to have the city and state refund the twenty-one developments that were their obligations. We are in this mess because nobody has accountability. And one more thing. The word demolition was not used on those surveys. Needless to say, when you don't have that word, it changes everything. So the fact that we are in this mess, it's a lack of transparency, it's a lack of truthfulness. And it's not just things that aren't transparent. Tenant association leaders are saying things like, "This is the same public housing that you have now." There is a difference between Section Eight and project, project-based Section Eight and under Section Nine. The confusion is mainly everyone. HOU, Housing Opportunities Unlimited, actually had the nerve to tell somebody they have to live a year in the new buildings, and then they can get a Section Eight voucher. Come on now. It's either you're lying on purpose to get people to do what you want, and they are not a third party that's uninterested. They have been hired to actually get surveys, to get tenants, to basically throw away their rights. And CHPC, let's be real, let's look at who's on their board. Monodak. Artemis. Datner. Hudson River, Hudson River Park, Hudson Yard Station. Hershen, Singer, and Epstein LLP, Cendero Verde, Dunnby, L&amp;M, CNC Management. They are PAC partners, part of the Eden Wall Bundle, and various others. We have Goldman Sachs and Company, Van Dyke III. These people are not non-interested parties. They all have something to gain. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony and pointing out some very important elements here. Thank you.
If there are any other folks wanting to testify in person, please see the sergeant or indicate now. Otherwise, we'll go to Zoom testimony. As a reminder, everyone testifying in person or on Zoom is encouraged to submit testimony through the council website or testimony@NYC.gov. I'll now begin calling the folks who are signed up to testify on Zoom. When I call your name, you'll be prompted to unmute. Please begin as soon as you're unmuted. Dana Eldon. You may begin.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Eldon.
Good evening. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You can hear me? Okay, great. I did write "good afternoon," but it's now evening. Good evening, Councilwoman Aviles, members of the council and NITIA and my constituency. Peace and blessings to you all. I'm Dana Eldon, president of St. Mary's Park Houses, resident council. I'm here today to voice my dismay and disapproval of privatization of public housing, including the usage of private developers and investors who will capitalize off of our homes. Rad and PAC and the Trust has become a master plan to end public housing and ultimately, ultimately displace thousands of families and many seniors from their homes. I am one. I am a senior and disabled, so I am concerned. Here at St. Mary's, we have seventy-three vacancies. The breakdowns between Section Eight and Section Nine are unknown versus six vacancies from two years ago, as I was alerted to this by Councilman Salamanca at the last housing vacancy hearing. Why isn't NITIA working towards fixing these apartments? That's revenues that my development is missing out on. And why is it that I keep hearing about millions of dollars that NITIA received and not seeing where the money has gone? Why, is my question. As an, an independent auditor, it's needed to assess where this money is being spent. A week, a week after the Trust bill was passed, we held a meeting for our residents to examine how residents felt. Unanimously, it was voted to remain Section Nine. We want to continually make the point that NITIA's residents do not want their homes privatized here. Additionally, residents must be able to make decisions for the future of their homes. The immediate solution is for all levels of government to fully fund NITIA under Section Nine. Needless to say, I'm appreciative of Ms. Trimble, Ms. Boba Hyatt, and Mr. Brian Honan for accepting St. Mary's Park Houses' wishes to date to remain Section Nine. However, I'm curious as to how long that understanding will remain as such. I question the adoption of the, excuse me. I question the adoption of the nine sixty-four into the state's law nine four zero nine. The social and economic impact on many of our low-income residents will endanger their ability to service themselves in a community where mixed income placements will influence how merchants and their price merchandise will occur. Also, the movement of residents throughout the city will impact how senior population especially will have to adjust everything in their lives. From shopping to doctors and everyday activities will be impacted. Some of these adjustments can impact the residents so drastically that it can be life-threatening. And quite frankly, seventy percent of the residents that I have spoken to do not want to be relocated. The residents should have a say as to what happens to them. No one person or group other than the residents themselves should make the decision to go with the conversion under Section Eight and/or with the Trust. Transparency is paramount in explaining the differences between Section Nine, Section Eight, Rad PAC, and Section Eight with the Trust conversions. Quite frankly, ninety percent of the residents citywide that I've spoken to do not know exactly what Rad PAC or the Trust is, nor the changes that would occur with their leases and their rights to represent themselves. And NITIA insists upon telling residents their perspective. Actually, there are no pros and cons to their representation of converting to Section Eight and Section Eight under the Trust. I'm sorry, but a bunch of new cabinets, floors, shiny refrigerators, and a basketball court or garden doesn't satisfy my palate. My rights are more important to me than those things, especially when you're talking about my home. It's not the Taj Mahal, but it's my sanctuary, and I want to keep it and the community I live in just the same. I yield the floor.
Thank you so much, Ms. Eldon.
Diana Blackwell, please unmute.
Good evening, Chair Aviles and members of the Housing Committee. My name is Diana Blackwell. I'm the current president at Fred Samuel Resident Association and co-chair of the SWAB NITIA Recycling Committee. I am here today to provide support for the Rad PAC program, which I which I have been a part of since its inception in 2015. I believe that this program is a reset for NICA as public housing and for future affordable housing. Here at NICA, the need for repairs has increased and is daily increasing, and the money from Congress, when finally received, will never be enough for the cost of repairs. Assistance in the forms of private partnership and the government's Section 8 program through the RAD-PAC can work if there is a joint effort between residents, NICA, and the private partners. When speaking of the conditions here at NICA, no one knows better than the residents what the living conditions are. NICA managements work at these campuses, but at the end of their workday, return to their healthy home. Private partners manage the property, but they return to their healthy homes. But residents live here day and night in conditions that are deplorable, where the repairs are slow, are abhorrent quality, or not at all. The reality of RAD-PAC is that NICA, which is rather scary, will still be involved, but not as the manager of the property. To most, this conversion news of new management will bring hope for a quality of life deserving of the rent that NICA residents pay. Fast-forwarding to the future, our homes must be sustainable according to the New York City Sustainability Plan. NICA has proven in the past to lag behind in necessary improvements for updating our buildings and bringing them to code. Good news. NICA does have a sustainability plan, and its goals are to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 80% by 2050. Improve indoor environment, gardens, and urban agricultural programs. Ensure operations of waste and water and efficiency of infrastructure. This cannot be done alone. Help is needed from outside funding sources from which RAD-PAC provides an answer. It is not the only answer, but one of the answers. It is not a perfect plan. With the joint efforts between residents and NICA, the private partners, it will be a start. I'm just going to add this last thing, and then I will conclude. On this last note, I'd like to make mention that some of these partners, these developers, have an idea that will continue generating funds for these campuses. They need to be heard with serious consideration. It should never be that we should return or run short of funding like NICA has, and the residents find themselves back in the same situation. With this, I thank you, and I yield.
Thank you so much, Ms. Blackwell. We hear you.
The next witness will be Jacqueline Lara. Time is starting.
Hi. My name is Jacqueline Lara, and I'm from Fulton Houses, and I'm one of the residents that opposed the demolition. In 2019, De Blasio put a working group together to stop the protest that we had then, put two demolitions of my building and one on 19th Street. And when he put this working group together, there was only six residents that the TA presidents choose to, you know, to be on their side. So there was only 12 residents in total during this working group, and that was it. No other residents from the outside. I fought to come in because I wanted to hear what they were deciding about my building and, you know, about the development. In the conclusion of this working group, there was not supposed to be no demolition at all. It was the RAD-PAC. But I, in my opinion, if it was the RAD-PAC, I think they should have a town hall. We're having, these people are deciding on massive construction. I don't, we're not involved. We don't hear too much. Yeah, they did put some meetings, but they never answered. You ask the same question, they'll get frustrated because, in reality, they'll go around the answer. They will never tell you the real answer. I mean, we heard more in this, in this testimony, in this hearing than what we've heard in any kind of meetings. I have the survey in front of me because I kept a copy. I did not vote because it just didn't sound right. A, construction with rezoning targeted five years. B, new construction within existing zoning targets six to eight years. And then plain one with not telling you much, rehabilitation of your existing units. That's it. That's all that was there. So, I mean, they didn't give you much of a choice there, actually. So, you know, I disagree with what they're deciding. I do not want demolition. I've been here 21 years. I don't have not even a roach. It's how you handle your apartment. My apartment's not falling apart. These developments are not falling apart. NICA's been neglecting our buildings left and right. Graffitis everywhere. I mean, dogs pooping everywhere. They're not enforcing no laws in this development. So, you know, of course, things are going to start falling apart. They're not doing anything. They're not listening to us. Yes, we've been to Community Board Four. Look at all the Youtubes if you like. And they're lying. The only residents that are engaging with the TA president is, like we said, like they're the prep boys. That's why we call them the prep boys. Those are the only ones that are involved in those meetings that they be having because we're not in those meetings, and there's a lot of things that are being said and done that we don't know about. We have to find out things in Community Board Four or we find out through the hearing like we just found out. So please, you know, no demolition. It was not on the survey, and this is a survey. This is something that we thought about. Or what do you think about? This is not something that's bond that, no, we don't need no demolition. And I want to keep it, as a matter of fact. You know, for being such little snake, I would like to keep this Section 9. It would be perfect. And you know what? I have no roaches, no mice. I have no problem in my apartment at all, unless somebody comes and throws a box of roaches in front of my door because retaliation is ridiculous as well. I don't know my consequences after this hearing. But I'll tell you right now, anything happens, you know who to go to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lara. We hear you.
The next witness will be Christina Chase. Time is starting.
Hello. Oh, okay. I don't have my comments in front of me, but I thank you for the time. I'm the second vice president at Ravenswood Houses, as well as an advocacy coordinator at Taker Justice. I mean, I can definitely spread the statistics and the facts that we know about RAD and PAC with regard to residents not really being able to access their grievance with the processes as well as succession rights, even though technically, yes, it's in paper. A lot of our advocates at NILAC have been sharing the experiences on the ground with regard to assisting residents with their legal rights. And we know how predatory the preservation trust is with regard to the ability to access $10 billion in loans and bonds. But meanwhile, we know that less than 10% of their capital budget was actually accessed last year. Long story short, we know that NICA does not have the track record for us to put faith in any of the choices, really. And I think the reason why we're so gung-ho about saving Section 9 and preserving it as is is because it's the only robust set of rights that will allow us to genuinely have some forms of self-determination. I think it's atrocious that with regard to Fulton, Elliott, and Chelsea, and S.L. Chelsea addition, that you want to build even more than what public housing units is already there? It's going to be market rent and only 1,000 affordable? I think that's disgusting. I think it makes clear that this is a land grab, and you're going to move those bodies into a small area of land and just build. Meanwhile, we already have so much building already happening, so many of which are inaccessible and we cannot afford. And so we need to preserve Section 9 public housing because it is the only form of secure and stable housing for our most vulnerable working-class families. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chase.
The next witness will be Joshua Barnett. Time is starting.
Okay, hi. I also had "good afternoon." I'll say "good evening." Want to thank Alexa Ables for holding this hearing and all the work you do to support public housing. I will condense this because I know it's late, and everybody's been very patient. My name is Josh Barnett. I'm a member of Local 375, DC 377 ASME, and president of Chapter 25, Local 375 at NICA. I've also worked at NICA full-time for the Housing Authority as a registered architect since 1999. And I'm also here to speak against the privatization of public housing and ask that NICA and the city council really work to obtain more public funding stream instead of relying on the private sector. And I'm also speaking as a union rep because I see in RAD-PAC a real form of wage busting and union busting that no one's really talked about so far. We do know, obviously, that repairs to NICA's public housing are dearly needed. We deal with capital repairs in my division every day, and I fully understand desperation on the part of the residents for long overdue upgrades, no matter what the funding source. And we're dealing with that. People have said 40 years of chronic underfunding and deferred maintenance on buildings that were really poorly constructed to begin with. But privatization really isn't the answer, and RAD is privatization, no matter what they say about who holds the deed to the property. This is yet one more transfer of a vital public service to private management, as people have said, transferring over to corporations whose bottom line is the bottom line. And they wouldn't be doing it if there wasn't a profit motive involved. And this is creating a two-tier system for residents and workers, leaving in the end most of NICA developments underfunded and more susceptible to the ravages of climate change that we saw during Hurricane Katrina. And the thing is, we don't have to go this route. We know the money is there. NICA really doesn't talk about the fact that tax rates on the ultra-rich are lower than they've ever been, including in the city. And they're not pushing for higher tax rates on Wall Street. The state is not stepping up, and NICA is really not pushing the state to step up. They have $600 million for stadium for the Buffalo Bills, but not for public housing. And we also know that most of NICA's funding comes from HUD, and we don't see NICA advocating for things like cuts to the military budget or supporting legislation like the Green New Deal for public housing or any Velazquez's restitution bill for NICA. But from the point of view of the staff, which they were not talking about for four hours, really, RAD-PAC really represents potential union busting. If we look at the legislation, there are no provisions to higher civil service, no provisions to higher union, no provisions to honor existing labor contracts, no provisions to maintain Section 3 hiring for the residents. And this doesn't just hit the staff. When you lower wages like that, you have, you can turn it over to any fly-by-night maintenance company, and the residents are now going to be dealing, as they are, with an unstable and unaccountable workforce that's going to make conditions even worse in the long run. And RAD and PAC fitting in with NICA's ongoing outsourcing to expensive private consultants, it's what we deal with all the time. On my floor, where I work in Long Island City, you literally can't tell the difference between a union worker and a consultant except by the color of their ID badge. And that really is an expense that NICA hides, and we do need an overall audit on that. And the dangers of privatization are not limited to public housing. We see what happens when schools, libraries, parks, and transportation are turned over to private developments and private management. And so, you know, just in the end, we're bringing in private funding is really spelling the end of public housing as we know it. And we really need a moratorium on public-private partnerships of much stronger advocacy for public funding streams, the audit as we've talked about. And this seems like, this seems like a cure, but it's really a poison pill in the long run, where this is the last stock of affordable housing we have in this city, and we have to keep it public. For the sake of the workers, the residents, and the community. So thanks very much. We'll send this in.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Thank you so much for your advocacy.
The next witness will be Karen Blondell. Starting time.
If you could put in the chat what your name is, and we will change it for you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sure. I have not felt well all day, but I've sat through this hearing since 1:00. So it's been really long, but it's been pretty informative. My name is Karen Blondell. I am the president of Red Hook West. I am also a board member for the Public Housing Trust. And once again, the reason why I'm on that trust board is because it is a new creation as of 2022. And as a long-term public housing resident who's been veal-pinned in public housing for over 40 years, I find it important at my age right now, which is 60, to know what is going on from the inside. So I became an advocate for public housing about 10 years ago, which was right before the Southern District lawsuit filed by public housing residents. My issue here today is that we keep on saying we want to stay Section 9. Stay in Section 9, the rules are still the same. We have something coming up in January called HOTMA, where they're trying to say that if you're over-income in public housing, they want you to pay fair market for these same infrastructures that everybody's been complaining about all day. My problem is that the federal government, as in the past, when it comes to taking care of its own here in the United States, especially Black Americans, because we remember from the Emancipation Proclamation of 1865, and that by 1877, the Dixiecrats had made a deal with the Lincoln Republicans, and we were cast to the wolves. That continues to happen to this day. We've been begging for money. I've been to so many hearings, so many rallies and everything with congresspeople, state officials, city officials. So I feel a little insulted that we sit here and get mad at New York City Housing Authority for being the one that has to utilize the tools that the federal government put in place under the Obama administration. So we need you guys to start having hearings with the federal government, the state and the city, and us asking the questions to find out why when one person is helping us or one government agency or level, the other two are being adversarial. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Blondell. I agree 100%. The federal government has clearly been defunding NICA for years and is creating this incentive to move to Section 8 and other mechanisms. More to come on that.
The next witness will be Miguel Acevedo. Starting time.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for being there and being so patient to listen to public housing residents in the New York City Housing Authority. I want to say that I fully support everything that is said on supporting Section 8 because Section 9, as you just finished hearing, as everyone knows, has not been funded for decades. President Obama came up with this Section 8 program to preserve and protect public housing, to make sure we're not removed from the map and there is no longer, like what happened in places in Chicago and New Jersey, where public housing was eliminated. This has to be supported because Section 8 is the only real funding that will continue to protect and preserve public housing. I am also the TA president that people have been talking about at Fulton Houses. And I want to say that the survey that took place gave every single opportunity for every single tenant to participate in the survey, which was considered a vote, also a survey, because they asked the tenants in multiple different languages, multiple different days, and even on the internet, to pick and choose what they think is best for Fulton, Elliott, Chelsea. So we took it as a vote. They told us that a vote would be taken, and in the end, three, four months later, we were told 60% of the people that did vote, that had the opportunity or that they wanted to vote, voted for rebuilding these buildings and putting new buildings up. Maybe the word demolition wasn't mentioned, but they said replacement builders will be built in this survey. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you so much, Ms. Acevedo. Thank you for your patience in waiting to testify.
The next witness will be Tanisha Grant.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chair and City Council Committee for having this meeting. My name is Tanisha Grant, and I am the executive director of Parents Supporting Parents New York. As a community organizer on the ground, I am a witness to the disinvestment in public housing and its residents. I also know that a lot of Nycha residents are not fully aware of what the RAD PAC and trust programs are. There isn't transparency at all. I had a client who was lied to and told she has Section 8. They did not tell her the apartment is a Section 8 apartment. That is very different than what she was told. Our Nycha residents are being lied to and are signing leases simply because they want their public housing apartments to be upgraded. Residents deserve upgrades years ago. It is the leaders who have neglected Nycha across the city for decades. Fault. This is the fault of past and present leaders. It is an insult to listen to people talk about creating all these new programs instead of simply upgrading the structure of Nycha buildings. These so-called upgrades do nothing, in most cases, to update the infrastructure of the actual Nycha buildings. The Preservation Trust implementation is undemocratic. Holding residents' votes with a 20% threshold is not tenant engagement. At least 60% of residents should decide that they want these programs. The Preservation Trust Board is also not democratic. Nycha residents only have four out of nine seats, and all are appointed by the mayor and not appointed by the residents of Nycha at large. The PAC conversations, the PAC conversions, the residents don't even get to vote. Residents still do not know what RAD PAC is and how it impacts their leases. The narrative "better than before" is a horrible thing to say. It implies that people should be grateful to have work done in their apartments. Let me remind everyone, high-quality public housing is a human right.
Time is expired.
The fact that majority of the people in charge of RAD PAC and trust are white people is also disrespectful to the lived experience of the majority of non-white people who make up public housing residents. We, the people, demand that Section 9 public housing be invested in now. We will not stand by and watch these programs kill public housing. Public housing is the only deeply affordable housing in New York City. We will continue to organize with our community partner, residents, to preserve public housing, and we hope the City Council stands with us to stay Section 9 and make sure public housing is not privatized by private companies that never even stepped foot in Nycha as a resident. Thank you for listening to my testimony, and we will be...
Thank you so much, Ms. Grant. Always bringing wisdom to the testimony. Thank you.
The next witness will be Theo Chino.
Starting time.
Hello? Hi, my name is Theo Chino. I'm the first national secretary of the Social Democrat of America, the socialist faction in the Democratic Party, also known as the committee of the Second Socialist International. Regarding this bill, we understand it's a requirement of the trust law that the state has passed, but as a type 2 socialist, we believe that tenants are not landlord, and it is not their job to care for the property. It is public housing. It is the government's job to care for public housing. RAD and PAC are liberal program. Any city needs public housing. It is the job of the government to provide it. And any elected official calling themselves progressive and supporting RAD and PAC are liberal and should register in the Republican Party. These politicians are not progressive. Hopefully, in the future, we can revert back to a model that can look like the Vienna Model. Anyone who don't know the Vienna Model, they can check it on our website, socialist.us, and click on the Vienna Model link. But regarding intro 646, they should be made universal. 646 should apply to all the housing stock in New York City, including the private stock, Nycha, the one managed by HPD, and the HDFC conversion. It shouldn't be that we learn of contract content, such as the amount of the money dispersed when a worker lose a finger and the document become public in a court case. We can do better, and we socialists have more than 150 years of experience in building and managing public housing. Yes, we have made mistake, but any government in the world that has experimented with the private model knows the future. It has been tried, and it has failed. At the end, the public had to pay for while the private corporation owner walked away richer and the taxpayer poorer. The U.S. Constitution preamble is "we, the people," not "the corporation will." The Constitution say "we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, and provide for common defense, promote general welfare, and secure the blessing and liberty for ourselves and our prosperity" do ordain this Constitution.
Thank you.
Corporation do not actually are part of the Constitution. I know my testimony goes a little bit beyond Nycha, but this city need to learn that these developers have done to the HDFC conversion. Yes, there are few success, but many more failure. We will begin, we'll be at the same place in 20 years when the subpart work need to be replaced and money invested. Public housing is public housing, and it is the government's responsibility to keep it. The idea of a trust is about making people believe that they are owner, and because it is not their job, it's an unfair to add this burden and workload on them. The city needs a vision and start moving towards a model that is made for the tenant so we can ensure domestic tranquility and promote general welfare. Another idea we socialist type 2 have: tax the rich. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you can come up with new solution.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chino. With that...
Having no one else in person and no other person virtually, I'll turn to the chair to close the meeting.
Great. So I just want to thank everyone. And on that note, I have to lift up the incredible suggestion, and the right thing to do would be to tax the rich to ensure that public housing remains public and in the public domain and is safe, dignified, affordable housing for all. Private market solutions will not support. We know what the private market does. Housing is a human right. Thank you.